I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just. Thank you. And if you would, you guys can come forward here, we have some lights. And I want to recognize Michael Zidaneo, who's the head of the drama, he's a student here, also a voter, and the head of the problem, these folks are going to sing, yeah, of course. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Hi, really excited to introduce some of the fantastic members of Drama Club tonight. Also, Shane's book, Body Holiday, the Musical, is on the watch, so be excited to hear that. I'm very, very proud to ask, and Drama Club is an international...
You want to stand up, please, from the national anthem.
Oh, sing, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous spires? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, sing, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Let me just go over a couple of things here, like, the district clerk is most appealing, should be, and shortly. Then we have Budget Committee, Jack Kozak, Sandman Rogers Oslo, John Swayze, Annie Correa, Cheryl Ginn, James Dyke, and the Chair, Annie Collier. The school board, we have Corey Mason, the Chair, Vice Chair Nancy Ross, Tammy Black, Dr. Pamela Brown, Peter Broderick, Sheila Pierce, Jane Bennett, and the Business Administrator, Dr. Carol Kapaloff, Legal Counsel Diana Burrow, and Dr. Randy, Superintendent. And I think I have the good fortune of being the moderator tonight, I'm Rick Rushman, and I'm moderating the meeting today for you. Couple of housekeeping things, the kids that gone that did the Star Spangled Banner, and we have lots who go here running a camera here, and then we have a newspaper reporter, Carol Blessing, from the Lawrence Institute Tribune, and I told her she could sit down here, but she needs to get a necker, to be able to hear what's going on, so she can report in the paper. And if somebody maybe not know, when we first came in, we kind of sat full on the ballots, most of them had ballots, and people were, and I would direct it upstairs, so the voters down there get a ballot. If you happen to see somebody with two ballots, I want you to grab it out of their hand, and start screaming to the police officer, and we will, they will not be happy when we have done it. So, I want to be clear of that. So, and then, as I say, everybody has one ballot, and it's one vote, we're going to have secret ballots, I've given a petition, you have a secret ballot that goes on a number of articles, and we'll do that. I would urge you, as always, and I will certainly, do everything I can, I will certainly do everything I can to make sure the meeting is, is fair, that's my most important job, and orderly, and that we get through the work that we have before us tonight as best we can. I would ask for not to do with personalities, in other words, if you want to say something, comment on one of the previous speakers, say, as one of the previous speakers said, a previous speaker I disagree with, but don't say it. I don't like Joe Smith, because he said that, or she said that. Try to, let's not get into that. I'm going to recognize everybody that wants to speak, that's what we're here for tonight, and if it gets really late, for whatever reason, I'll probably look for motion, maybe the Journal Saturday morning, if it gets really late, and we'll see where we go with that. Anybody have any questions at any time, see me, and we'll try to deal with it. Okay? Having said that, on the first article, we're going to be voting on that on the 14th of March, on the ballot, and so I'm going to do it, Article Two, shall reports of school district agents audited committee's office, who showed to be accepted and placed on a file, we have a motion here. Is that it?
No.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this article? If not, if not, then it'll be on, it'll be on the ballot on March 14th as printed. Article number three, operating budget, shall sandbags the school district raise appropriation as an operating budget, not including appropriation by special warrant articles and other appropriation votes separately. The amount set to vote on the budget posted to the warrant, or is amended by vote at the first session, for the purposes set forth therein. Totaling thirty-three million six hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. Should this article be defeated, default budget shall be thirty-four million seven hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred forty dollars, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Sandman Regional School District or by law, or the governing body, and they hold one special meeting in accordance with our say, forty colon thirteen, Roman rule ten, and sixteen, to take up the issue of revised operating budget overall. This warrant article does not include appropriations in any other warrant article. And I would ask, when people, I want to recognize, being called first, for them to vote, and then others after vote, when you come to the podium, please keep your voice up, speak clearly, speak into the mic, we all want to hear, which I would say is important, and we'll get started. And please, and clerk is, if you, just, clerk, Melissa, very meticulous in terms of record keepers, so please state her name, so she can get that down for the, for the notes on the meeting, if you would. Ms. Poyet, do you have the motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the articles written.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Poyet, that's not, you need to jack the sound up on this, go ahead, you wouldn't make your presentation here or there. Okay, come on up.
Now, for this school district warrant article number three, and a budget. This is the first action of the two-year voting process, as I think you all know. And twenty years ago, the district adopted a voting process called the SB2. It's an adaptation of the traditional town meeting, and in this first session of the two, the voters present decide what will appear on the ballots in March. We'll decide the amount of the proposed budget, and the amounts of all the other warrant articles, except more, and leave the negotiating meeting contracts can be changed. Let's start with the bottom line. The total proposed general fund budget, also known as the operating budget, for next year, begins on July 1st, is thirty-two million four hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars. The budget for the current year, not the actual spending, is eight hundred forty-three thousand dollars higher than this proposed budget. The superintendent...
Are you going to bring it up on the slide?
I thought I did. No? Ah. Where's the tech help, please?
Do we also have to identify ourselves?
I'm sorry?
Do we also have to identify ourselves? Do we need to apply?
Oh, I didn't introduce before, my name's Annie Collier, I'm Chair of the Budget Committee. We need tech help, please. Okay, we're not getting this slide. Thank you for that. I was hoping Jack Davis, I didn't know, thank you. Uh-oh. I need you back again.
She needs you.
She needs you again.
I need you back again. Please. So, we are at the fact that the budget for the current year, not the actual spending, is eight hundred forty-three thousand dollars higher than this proposed budget. The superintendent proposed a budget that's just under the default for next year, and the school board voted that by a little less than a hundred fifty thousand dollars, to a budget that's flat with this current year's budget. You'll see those in the two corrugated blue bars. You may ask how it can happen, that the Budget Committee can now propose a budget that's two and a half percent lower. Well, you can ask, how can the school board lower their proposed budget by an arbitrary a hundred fifty thousand dollars to come up with, come up with their budget recommendation, without identifying any evidence for savings? You may ask, if they could know without looking, that they can find a hundred fifty thousand dollars, how do you know they couldn't find more? Well, the Budget Committee did look, and we found more. This presentation will tell you how, why, and what impact it will have on the education of the children in the district, and on the cost of the taxpayers who pay for that education. First, let me acknowledge the cooperation of the Superintendent and the Business Administrator this year. For the first time in many years, the Budget Committee accepted the task of looking at line item detail of the budget, and the story behind every expense in the budget. To accomplish this, required the transmission of a ton of information from the administration to us. Whoops. Figure out how to use this computer first, you know? Just touch. Okay. Now, here, let's do the next slide. Uh, we don't win. The nonsense of the meeting for which, so...
No matter.
Pardon me?
No matter. Move the, move the map, you'll see it over there.
Uh-huh, let's see if it comes over here.
No, no, the other screen.
Let's see if it comes this way. Ah, got it. Thank you, thank you, okay. Okay. Sorry about that, two little glitches here. All the data that the Budget Committee has used and presents in this budget, came from the school administration, from the SA seventeen Office of Leadership Team, and has been provided by the Business Administrator and the Department of Education as well. So, thank you again, Dr. Lake and Miss Kapala for the cooperation and help. Let's talk about budgets and actual expenses first. Right now, we're a little more than halfway into the fiscal year that goes from July to June. That means that we don't know how much the district is actually going to be spending in total this year. Well, we do know this. Okay, I think that's it, okay. All right, fine, enough to... It's on the floor. We ran over this last week, make sure that everything is going to be fine here, too. Okay. Okay. We do know that the actual audited expenses for the year that ended just last June, and the actual expenses for the twelve months that are ending on December 31st, were right about thirty-two million dollars, not at the million-dollar higher budget of Mountain Forest this year, and originally asked for again this year, next year. Actual spending tells us exactly how much education is currently costing in our district. For perspective, we put up some historical information. This is the year 2015, total general fund expenses were one point four million dollars lower than they are now, at thirty million six hundred thirty-three thousand. This is the year 2014, was close to 2015, at thirty million four hundred thousand, and the year before that was about a million dollars lower again. The school board originally proposed an increase for the coming year of three point nine percent over the latest audited results. We are as opposed to this proposal as for a one point four percent increase in staff. Neither the budget for this year, nor the proposed budget for fiscal year 18, includes staff raises of about five hundred seventy-four thousand. These are separate warrant articles that will be discussed later tonight. All right, nonsense, kitchen. Here we go. I'm terribly sorry, folks, this is not going to smoke cases like that. Okay. The proposed general funds budget, thirty-two million four hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars, includes the superintendent's recommendations for next year, for the defined fixed increases, some flat spending, and some savings from staffing and medical changes. First, we look at changes that are planned for the next fiscal year. Although we have declining moments in our district, some of them stay the same or go up. Examples are health costs, transportation, and early retirements, debt service, and utility and property insurance costs. These expenses are in the proposed budget, and some of them are already a part of our latest cost spending. The total fee fixed costs as wedged out of the defined one for next year are fourteen million three hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars, the administration tells us. The administration has not proposed any other new programs that require additional funding this year. They have recommended a hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred four dollars in net new staffing for special education care professionals, which is also within the proposed budget number. In addition, the district needs new financial software package for a hundred twenty thousand dollars. The district administration has advised us of the anticipated costs in areas like special education, and we use the administration's estimated requests in those cases. Specifically, we use the administration's proposed numbers for professional and support staff, and professional services, online fees, and software dues, and curriculum, and new and replacement furniture equipment. That amount totals, a total of seventeen million thirteen thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars, and then we adjusted them. One of the components we reviewed to propose our budget is how much money we actually spent in the most recently audited fiscal year. We use the actual costs that have been spent for areas like supplies, maintenance, overtime, printing, postage, telephone, rentals, and the miscellaneous expense category. The total for these actual costs in the budget is one million seven hundred three thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars, or a bit more than five percent of the total budget. It's the Budget Committee's job to recommend a budget that meets the educational needs, with prudent attention to the fiscal responsibility of the community. It's the school board's job to spend the money the voters approve, according to the priorities the school board sets for the district. As a committee, WEDCOM collectively identified one million seven hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars in potential savings from the budget the superintendent brought forward in November for our consideration, after carefully examining not only the books, but after interviewing the administrative leadership team. We're recommending instituting a budget that saves only about a half of that one point seven potential for savings, or about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars less than the current budget for us today. This presentation will tell you about all the other options that we considered, which can be based in over time, should the school board so like. A portion of that under eight hundred fifty thousand dollars savings for this year's budget number came from using actual expenses instead of the current budgets. Some came from five reductions in staffing. Some came from some belt tightening, that we asked the staff, administrators, and school board to share in, to help ensure passage of the professional and support staff contracts and the ADA compliance warrant article, to keep the Swayze gym open. These were emphases of the Budget Committee since last spring, that we wanted to see these things happen this year. Please note that the Budget Committee recommends a line number to voters, and does not have any authority to allocate how approved money gets spent. That's the school board's responsibility. After evaluating all the general fund budget components, we produced our recommended budget for the next fiscal year. The WEDCOM total recommended budget is thirty-three million six hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred sixty-eight. This total budget is comprised of two funds, the general fund and the special revenues fund. The general fund is the combination of all the line items in the budget that's given to the district to operate the schools. The special revenues fund is the amount of money that we first have to fund for food services and for federal reimbursement for grant programs, and that then comes back to the district after we first paid for it. When you look at the total past actual expenses, it's important to differentiate between the two funds. For instance, in the fifteen sixteen fiscal year that ended in June, the total special revenues were actually one point eight million dollars, or about five hundred fifty thousand higher than is estimated for the coming year by the administration. The amount in the special revenues fund is an estimate, both in the current fiscal year and in the budget for next year, and it comes from the school administration. It's not anything that we change at all at the Budget Committee. The general fund is the number we examined to see what the district needs out of the funding. Actually spent in the year just ended was just over thirty-two million dollars in the general fund. The amount being proposed for the next fiscal year is about four hundred thousand dollars more than what was actually spent last year. Boy, this is such a sketchy little mouse. Yeah, it's... There it is, all right, thank you. The amount being spent is, in the last twelve months, is slightly higher than the audited fiscal year end, and reflects some of the anticipated costs that are in the budget, and comes from the monthly expense statements generated by the district business office. The bottom line, this budget is an increase for the district. Let's not confuse budgeting with actual spending. This budget is not a cut, is it an increase over what's being spent right now in the district, and it covers the educational needs of the district. There are two budget numbers that you choose between at the polls in March, the proposed budget that comes out of fiscal intercession, and the default budget. The default budget is the same as the current fiscal year 2016, 17 budget, plus the lines budgeted contractual or one-time expenses. This has been developed by the school administration and approved by the school board. The contractual additions to the current budget are items such as health insurance premiums, transportation contracts, debt service, and special education, and early retirement mandated cost increases. The total of the increases is six hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred twenty-six. This year, there were one-time expenses budgeted during the first part of this year, such as building improvements, early retirements, new equipment, and a one-time transfer to the capital reserve fund. One-time expenses which occur later in the fiscal year and are not budgeted, but are items the school board decides to spend money on, money that they have left over as the year ends, are not deducted from the default budget, because the default is calculated in January and the year ends in June. The end of the year is June 30th. The result this year is a default budget of thirty-four million seven hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred forty dollars. The default budget is developed under guidelines described in the New Hampshire devised Statute Explanatory or RSAs. These are the two budgets that you choose between when you vote at the polls on March 14th, the proposed budget and the default budget. As you can see here, very broadly, the default budget is about one million dollars higher than the WEDCOM proposed budget for fiscal year 18. Both of these budget numbers contain both the general fund and the estimated special revenue fund budgets. This slide shows money that has been returned in past years to the taxpayers. These are unexpended funds that come back as a credit against taxpayer allegation to support the budget we vote in at the polls every March. The return has averaged about six hundred eighty-five thousand a year in past years, and this has occurred even when the district has been operating on default budgets. For the two budget years, fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18, we do not have actual results. The administration typically uses five hundred thousand as an estimated amount of money to be returned to the taxpayers as a credit. If the actual unexpended funds returned at the end of the year are more than the five hundred thousand dollars estimated, the tax rate will be lower. If we turn unexpended funds at the year end lower, the tax rate will be increased.
Do you have order?
Yes.
The proposed budget on the screen is different than in the warrant article?
Thirty-four million seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars.
On the other page?
Oh.
So, which one is it?
What is the Sandman School Book by the way? Five, three, five, and a zero. For the two budget years, fiscal year 17 and 18, we do not have actual results. The administration uses five hundred thousand dollars as an estimated amount of money to be returned to the taxpayers as a credit. If the actual unexpended funds returned at the end of the year or more, then it goes up, I already read that. It should be noted that the amount returned this year 2014, 15 included a one-time insurance refund. Also, please note, that the amount returned this past year included money that was held back and then not needed for the middle school roof, and two hundred fifty thousand dollars retained by the school board in the prior year, and then given back to the taxpayers as a credit this year instead. It was also after a good bit of money was spent or set aside as encumbrances to be spent on homeworks, electrical upgrades, and other capital improvements, like the baking roof. Each year, the school board has had money left over at the end of the year that they have spent in capital improvements that were not in the budget. They've made it a practice to return all money... Is it over there? This is not the money left over. Got it. They've made it a practice to return all the money left over from special education. This year, the school board decided, with advice from the administration, not to be including or planning on budgeted money for any capital improvements, but to put those forward instead as separate warrant articles. Danielle, I want to thank you for providing, for seeing that. Both Carol and I missed that, I did have Miss Kapala review the slides, so we missed that one.
Do you have an order, please? Do you have order, please? I do not review the numbers here, because I was not provided the supporting documentation that I have.
What we're going to do, let, let the speaker make the presentation, and then I, I know, Mr. Mason's going to make the presentation, so let's, let people make it, and...
Thank you. The budget preparation process is a three-part endeavor on the parts of the school board, the school district administration, and the school district budget committee, over the past ten months. The administration recommended a budget based on the current budget money, plus or minus some adjustments. The administration kept the budget increase minimal, in order to help passage of the staffing contracts. It's the job of the administration to ask for everything they may want or need. It's the Budget Committee's job to find balance between the needs of the district and the needs of the community. According to state law, we elect a school board to set the educational goals and policies for the, for the administration to follow, within the budget that the voters appropriate. The school board listens to the administration, and then recommends a budget to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee makes the budget recommendation to the voters. The administration is a group of employees in the district, led by the Superintendent, whose job it is to implement and follow those goals and policies, and to make recommendations to the school board. The administration suggests... The administration suggests, develops suggested goals, and the funding needed to meet them, and presents their wish list to the school board. It's their job; they have a wish list, and they have done that. The school board this year spent one working session on the budget and ended up recommending about $150,000 less than the budget that he had originally proposed. It's so strange, it goes backwards. They did not specify where the savings were accounted on. The Budget Committee is also made up of elected citizens like the school board. The Budget Committee is a study of past and existing budgets and actual expenses to learn what the school board proposes about the district's needs and wants, and to quote, "assist the voters in the prudent appropriation of public funds by seeking to balance the district, the towns, and the taxpayers' needs and wants." In making its budget proposal, this is the work the Budget Committee has done over the past years, prepare this proposed budget for you. The Budget Committee based their budget proposal on what is being actually spent in the district with some adjustments. The Budget Committee's cost-based approach is based on the actuals and actual spending plans. You, the voters, then decide in fiscal intercession what budget amounts will go before the voters for approval in March. I will note that some members of the school board and a good majority of the Budget Committee are still committed to defending the school board's recommended budget, and will be presenting it to you tonight as an alternative to this budget year ago. The budget, this budget, is based on actual spending; their budget is based on the current budget plus new requests and not on actual spending. The process is outlined in New Hampshire RSA 32. Like all other resgovernment entities, we have a system of checks and balances in place. So the superintendent proposed a budget that called for a small increase of $142,791 over the fiscal year 2017 general fund budget. His budget proposal is an increase over last year's actual general fund expenditures, and over the most recent 12 months, actual general fund expenditures of about 1.4 million, or 4.2%. The school board recommended decreasing that superintendent's budget by that $142,000, but did not specify where it was to come from. This resulted in a budget that's flat with this year's general fund budget and 1.2 million higher than what was actually spent as of last June, and that what is currently being spent in the latest 12 months in the district. The school board's proposal is an increase of 3.9% over current actual spending. The Budget Committee took these proposals together with their own investigation. Some of the budget approaches were used by members. One was the fact that projected enrollment decline of 2% for next year, and the proposal that the budget should match with a 2% decrease. One approach was based on the average of past actual spending to bring the budget back to former levels in light of no to low inflation in recent years. Some were based on the budget added approach the school board used. Some members use the actual spending approach, modified by identifying needs and savings. The Budget Committee together found the savings of close to $1.7 million from the superintendent's budget-based approach, and is recommending only about half of that. The contractual increases to the budget are items such as health insurance premiums, transportation contracts, debt service, and special education for early retirees mandated cost increases. In addition, there are increases in special education and in needed software. The Budget Committee is recommending instituted savings of $602,000 to ride the general fund proposal of the $32,422,467, which is an increase of $1,418,418,000, or 1.1%. The often stated goal of the Budget Committee this year has been to put forward a responsive budget that will allow for the very important passage of the staff contracts and the ADA compliance of the Swayze Gym. Finding responsible savings is a key target goal, as is paying attention to the superintendent's request for spending. This is a history of past voting on our school budgets. You will notice that except for three years from past ten, the lowest budget, whether it was the proposed or the default, is one of the polls. One year, they were identical. Taking this into account and the failure of the proposed teacher contract last year, the Budget Committee endeavored to look very carefully to put forward a conservative budget that supports education could pass, and carry with it the contracts and the other needed warrant for ADA compliance of the Swayze Gym and Chase Field House. This year, the budget warrant article will contain the tax impact of both the proposed and the default budgets. The language of the warrant is prescribed by the Department of Revenue, and the purpose of the tax impact statement is to help voters discern what the budget proposal means for A key part of the budget process for all stakeholders is to look not only at the flaws of the district, but also at the challenges. This year, there are four key challenges that we identified. The first, the most important of the contracts for military employees. These are teachers and support staff, the people who most directly impacted children. These new contracts will add, five percent of, in the first year of the contract, about $574,000 to the total expenses when included. Last year, the proposed teacher contract was defeated at the polls. The Budget Committee took on the challenge this year to prepare or present a budget that's responsibly designed to guard voter support, in the hopes that support will also extend to the two contracts, which Budcom members support. A second challenge we have this year is the state of our aging district infrastructure. The school board can issue the study on buildings and grounds this year in a decade. This study calls for $9.6 million in capital improvements to be made over the next five years. How this will be handled is to be determined by the voters. A portion of that investment, up to $1.2 million, is also coming before the voters this year. This expense is in addition to the proposed operating budget for next year, just for the professional and support staff contracts side. The Budget Committee determines only the ADA, for Swayze Gym and Chase Field House, not the whole $1.2 million that is allocated by the school again. In addition, there are the challenges every year of the town needs for fire stations and for police and our roads, and those have to be balanced with the amount of money taxpayers can spend. The fourth challenge is declining student enrollment. This is a challenge shared by many districts of New Hampshire and New England. The majority of Budcom members see that unless some costs are shifted, the cost to educate each student in our district may soar to levels that many find unsustainable. One of these challenges is the professional staff for teacher and support staff contracts. This past year, the district lost 27 of our teachers. Only 11 out of 27 had exit interviews, according to the administration, so the motivation of these 27 eights, mostly guesswork. There are budgetary costs associated with losing teachers. The cost, according to the administration, to bring a new teacher into our district is $9,810.84, and that does not include the cost to pay for the time of a new training teacher. One solution to save this money that is just a waste beyond the culture change and losing teachers is the cost of training in new ones. One way is to pass the professional contracts. The Budget Committee considered it a priority to balance a budget, to present a budget that supports the likelihood of those contracts being passed by the voters. Enrollment is another one of those challenges. Enrollment at Samhorn increased from 1996 to 2008, and since then, they have been steadily declining. The information on this line is sourced from the district and reports, plus the administration. It reflects the Budcom proposal for staffing next year. The projection from research by our administration is that the enrollment decline will accelerate over the next five years. In past years, there have been ongoing adjustments to teacher staffing. There have been only increases, however, in the number of administrators. This year's budget proposes staff reductions, most advanced by the administration, in teaching positions at all levels. There are some Budget Committee recommendations for administrative reductions too. The budget echoes the administration's recommendation for some shifts in special education staffing to accommodate specific needs. The net special education funding and staffing is pretty level. You will note that those special education expenses and school staffing decreased sharply in past years with mandated and needed special education requirements from the federal government. Staff levels also increased with the addition to the fiscal plan within the high school 10 years ago, with more custodians and an additional assistant principal in the high school. Some expenses never change or only increase; some can be adjusted. The role of the Budget Committee is to look at how to handle the realities of population, needs, and affordability for our schools in preparing and presenting our budget recommendation. A portion of the enrollment decline challenge is not just fewer births or moves away from the district. Some of the decline comes from the lack of student retention as they move into the high school age. This too has a cost. Similar for the teachers, we yield multiple reasons why we lose students. Some do, some for a school that offers a different sport or subject, some come from families where private schools are the family choice. We also lose some because of classroom disruption and lack of discipline, according to reports Budcom members have had. And we lose some because there are no true honors in grades nine and 10. We lose some because the math scores demonstrate problems in the education being delivered in the high school. This year, we lost 50 out of 665 students at the high school, and the prior year, we lost 59. The cost of losing students, especially academic students, is beyond the loss of friendships and culture. It means that several of our best academic achievers don't have their SAT scores to help in district rankings. One cost for this, besides the families involved, is that people who are looking for a home may choose other communities with better academic rankings, and our property values fail to rise. We also lose students who add for our sports, music, and drama culture. We cannot afford these losses any more than the 150,000 teachers. Budcom questioned what money would be needed to address at least some of these issues. We learned that the administration is looking at STEM and STEAM in the district, and they told us that there will not be adding costs to education services. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math, and STEAM adds arts to that equation. We also learned that the high school is abandoning its math curriculum, beginning with the ninth grade this year, also with no added expenses. With this new strategic plan that has just been adopted, the outcomes of the new math program will be measured and evaluated on an ongoing basis and modified as needed. Again, there are no additional budget costs associated with this. With the new one-on-one technology that also costs, the action costs are less than the tax costs, students will be doing mandatory SAT test preparation every week to improve test scores. Again, there is no additional cost to the district for this training. We also looked at the durability of adding true honors classes for those students who can qualify. We found that they can be accommodated with existing and even reduced staff if the incoming school board makes some policy and master schedule changes. That means while Budcom members felt these initiatives may be needed from an educational and budgetary perspective, the Budget Committee found that we know budgetary changes needed to make them happen, according to input from the administration. These educational improvements, if instituted, are school board policy, not budgetary. Members of the Budget Committee looking at mirrors in the other districts of New Hampshire and the state as a model. This is a comparison that comes from the New Hampshire Department of Education website. The pink comparison in the hand are the state averages, which you see there in pink. Samhorn has been way above the state averages in spending, and the discrepancy continues to expand. The green and pink bars on this chart compare Samhorn with the state. Because there are a lot of varieties and demographics in the state, some districts that are nearby and some that are powerfully sized districts that cover kindergarten through grade 12, we're also looked at. It is very difficult to find powerfully sized districts that are coming, so the comparison includes surrounding counties. These are most of the towns used last year by the Budget Committee, including our much larger but nearby Timberland and Exeter schools. The Exeter school is actually a combination of six schools, and what we did was we added the individual school cost and then divided by the total number of students, so it would show the total, K through 12, for student cost. This indicator is only bad; it's an indicator of things to look at more closely. Wastere River has higher costs than Samhorn, and is a little, is a much more urban demographic. Pelham obviously keeps its cost very low. Epping is smaller, so it doesn't have the potential for size efficiency, but it's lower than Samhorn. Again, it's just an indicator; it's not determinant of educational or financial strategies for your district. What it does is to help demonstrate where balance may be needed. The cost per student that hired Samhorn and Pelham in the state in this proposed budget brings Samhorn into better alignment. Seventy-one percent of the budget is staffing. Budcom looked at the other 29% before looking at staffing, and is recommending a budget that echoes the actual expenditures of the most recent years. The data on the Department of Education website does not include transportation contracts or school debt or food costs, it is completely information counterable from one district to another. For instance, the fact that we have that service and Pelham does not, is not a factor in the difference in the cost per people difference between schools. This is a chart of enrollment for Samhorn, both historic and projected, as supplied by the district administration. You can see that over the past 10, seven years, enrollment has declined by 11%, and the projected loss is another 15% in the coming five years. These numbers do not include the 7.5% additional losses of students that we've experienced during the high school years, so these losses add to those enrollment declines projected in the numbers shown here. This is a reality that we must face. Without some changes in operations, including staff changes, which would rise more than 70% of the budget, the cost to educate each student could soar to levels that would prove unsustainable. The administration has proposed some staff changes for the coming year, and Budcom has some additions.
Do not say Budcom anymore.
I'm sorry?
Don't say Budcom anymore. It's offensive.
The State Department of Ed website keeps track of information supplied by the districts. The school board has recently looked at the stats on the average number of students per teacher. Over the three years from 2013 to 2015, the school board found that the state average is 12.3 students per every teacher, whereas Samhorn has an average of 10.8. In the most recent fiscal year reported, the state average is 11.9, and Samhorn is 10.6. This doesn't sound like a lot, but the excess staffing indicated by this comparison translates to 17 teaching positions, too many today, and increases to 20 next year if the same Let's look at some specific comments of this proposed budget. The administration proposed some staffing changes for special education for a net cost of $40,000 revenue. Dr. Blain has called for a reduction of three special education teachers and one pair of professionals, and the addition of four pair of professionals and one school psychologist for the district. The director of special education stated these changes best meet the special education needs of students for the coming year. The net changes for special education will be increased, as I said, by about $40,000. For the elementary schools, the superintendent recommended a reduction of one teacher and more, and the Budget Committee recommends another as well, to keep class sizes within the parameters of school board policy. With an average salary of about $52,000 plus benefits of 51% next year for teachers, this is estimated to be about $160,000 in district savings. There are no recommended changes at Baiki. At the middle school, declining enrollments have resulted in the administration calling for a three teacher reduction with a redistribution of teams for grades six, seven, and eight. The savings from this will be an estimated $234,000, including benefits. The school board chair has recently completed a series of studies on our district. The data source is the Department of Ed website. What he found is, fact, enrollment numbers are declining all over the state, including Samhorn. Fact, Samhorn has 1.2 students higher than average in grades one to eight for class sizes. That means that the administration of the school board has done a good job of managing the declining enrollment in those grades.
1.9, 1.9.
1.9, 1.9, even more. In fact, in comparable PKA through 12 districts, the average student teacher ratio is 12.3, while Samhorn is 10.8 average over the past three years. That means we have smaller class sizes. Now, that would seem to be a conflict, until you look more closely at the second fact, that the class size studies on the State Department of Ed's site cover only grades one through eight. The fact that Samhorn class sizes are 1.9 students higher in the lower grades... The fact that Samborn class sizes are 1.9 students higher in the lower grades means that our average class sizes in the high school are a good bit lower than the high school's state average. It's like taking a balloon and squeezing it in one area that pops out in another. This is clearly documented when we examined the high school master schedule. The Budget Committee members looked at that and found that class sizes are dictated by two factors in the high school: the schedule and the electives, according to the administration in book. Members asked if there were a way to normalize class sizes without losing electives, and the answer is yes, we believe. We looked at some enrollment challenges at the high school. The administration recommended no changes. The school board policy used annual class sizes not to exceed 18 in kindergarten, 20 in grades one through three, and 25 in grades four through 12. The current scheduling system in the high school means that there are class sizes smaller than the policy throughout the high school, averaging 16 in a class. There are a couple outliers that exceed the level of 25, and the school board and administration need to deal with those. If we exclude special ed, vocational ed, and advanced placement classes, which are typically smaller, the average number of students per class is closer to 17. It's a little bit, there's a difference from 25. It appears that the schedule is dictating the number of classes rather than the student need. We explored the master schedule and found that it is very possible to expand class sizes in grades nine and 10 by four or five students each to an average of 22 in a class, about the same as the middle and the elementary schools. Or the school board could go further and increase to the increase to 25 students in each class in the main courses in grades nine and 10. What would happen is to simplify the master schedule and have a redistribution of teams. The course opportunities and the educational culture of the power coach could be retained while reducing the number of teaching positions by a range of between four and eight. This would result in district savings that's between $300,000 and $700,000, $50,000. The result would be no reduction in the electives offer and no reduction in honors or special education or AP classes. In fact, we found that true honors could be added to grades nine and 10 with a schedule and a policy change. The Budget Committee decided, while this change is very dual, we did not remove this funding from our proposed budget. Only savings of $78,000 on high school professional staff is included in this budget, not the total possible of $750,000. This savings is based on the average teacher being paid $52,000 plus benefits. The Budget Committee suggested the school board explore a reduction of some low force demand positions. Perhaps those positions could be part-time or assign teachers to teach those courses part-time to other classes according to certifications and demand. Possibilities include French and home and consumer science. The school board and force demand will decide. Perhaps instead, the school board will have other ideas. The Budget Committee found potential savings of up to $750,000 and recommended savings of only $78,000 in professional staff in the high school. There are no changes in this budget to either make athletics or co-curricular programs that were proposed by the administration or are put forward here. Athletics, art, music, and other co-curricular programs are widely subscribed to in the district. Research shows direct correlation to student and life success. This budget supports and funds all current programs exactly as they are now. At the elementary levels, there's a broad range of participation in activities that range from music to computers to STEAM clubs to student council to intramural athletics. Many of them are coached by teachers with small stipends for their extra time while working with kids. That activity level extends to the middle and high schools. This chart shows the level of participation as of the past full school year. The trends have been moving up. I'd like to note that five middle school teams qualified for tournament level competition last year and over one-third of our high school teams. Again, there are no changes that are proposed either higher or lower in this budget. This chart shows the math testing over the years. What we can see is that kids have performance in the lower grades that does not translate to success at the high school level, as our kids are prepared to go off to places where they need the math skills to conduct their lives after Samborn. This is a condition throughout the state, as we are close to but somewhat below average performance in the state over the years, where data is available from the Department of Ed website. Grade 11 is an exception, where Samborn is quite a bit below state averages in math, and fellow English language arts again this year, too. We've spent $750,000 over the past years on a position for the schools that is not sharing results that exceed state norms or that extend into high school for kids. We recommend stopping this annual expense of over $90,000. These are SAT results last year for high schools sized within 25% of our 665 students, high schools that were identified as comparable by our high school principal, Mr. Stack. Our standardized test results show that we seem to have a pretty good level of English language arts, although not as good as the state or comparable high schools. Math has been severely lagging other districts in the high school. This shows a real need to be addressed in our district. The administration has recently implemented new math strategies in grade nine and new free SAT preparation at the high school. The budget supports these measures. All current educational programs have continued to provide unmingued for current and planned educational improvement strategies in the district. With declining enrollment, the Budget Committee recommends the school board redistribute administrative responsibilities at the high school. There are 665 students in the high school with three principals, three guidance counselors, one guidance director, one special education director, one home-based counselor, and one drug and alcohol counselor. The Budget Committee suggests the school board review re-application of the responsibilities of the high school guidance director position in the high school. The system in place is that each of the high school principals works with one of the three guidance counselors and their assigned students. BudCon suggests implementing a trend family in other districts where all counselors work with students and have direct caseloads, with one or more getting some supervisory responsibilities, as with the lead teacher system. The national standard for guidance counselors is a ratio of up to 250 students to one counselor. We are well within those parameters. There are multiple options the school board can explore, and the recommendation is that they institute a high school administrator savings of $108,000, which includes benefits, as the faculty fill. The Budget Committee recommends that this position be put before the voters in a separate warrant article next year if the voters want it. But in the meantime, we recommend that this amount of funding be taken out of the proposed budget. The Budget Committee is seeking district-wide participation and hoping to restrain the budget growth so that the teacher support staff...
Alright, so I'm nervous, everyone who knows me, I usually don't get nervous, but I do get nervous. I'm from Andrew Basin, and I'm a Gemini from Newfoundland, Hampshire. We start off, all my presentations will have you with a quote, and I want to thank you all for coming this evening. Round of applause to yourselves, to the staff, to the parents, to the students who are outside. Thank you very much. Like this says, never doubt at all that a small group of thoughtful citizens can change the world. I want to give props and accolades to my esteemed school board members who helped me get to this point today and helped you get to this point as well. More importantly, I also want to acknowledge that we are a diverse, eclectic group, as said on Facebook, and as a true state, we all come from different walks of life, and more importantly, we all bring a different vision, focus, and ideas to the table. More importantly, I think five of the seven of us are and have somehow, some way, an educational, like a subscriber, actually worked in this building. Sheila dedicates every waking hour of her time here to hand you luck as well. So, long story short, we know education, we love education, we love our kids. I want to ask those who are here right now, do you know about your investment? Do you know what Samborn means? Do you understand how Samborn has impacted myself, my child who's outside right now, and future one who's sitting in a carriage? I want to thank the staff, because ultimately, we are very proud. The school board is proud of the staff. Brian Gray has brought an opportunity to be internationally recognized. He's had students and staff and others come to our community, like Governor Nani Sun and others. Congratulations and thank you, Brian. Brian Gray is just like this man, Evan. Evan has one hand helped us be entertained, be challenged, and also be concerned about subject matters of our day, influenced some men like Michael right here, and myself for that matter. So I want to say thank you very much, everybody. More importantly, this summer, we had our second event. Because we are first in the nation with pace training, we had a summit. We had 350-plus different staff members and peers come to our community. 330 of them represent eight states and multiple universities. Eight states descended upon Samborn this summer to learn something. Congratulations to you. So, we're going to success, as you can see here, there's quite the amount of stuff that we can go ahead on and on and on about. Your taxpayer dollars are creating champions. Your taxpayers' dollars are creating future leaders. The people behind you on screen are those who are helping influence that, right down to Carol Kapola, the distinguished business administrator, to Ellen Lee Howard, outstanding service for our curriculum work. Thank you all. None of this took happening without actually having a senior leader, one who, yes, I have at times been challenged by his ethics, his morals, very at his presentation, but he's him. He's Dr. Blake. I told him a year ago, I told Dr. Blake a year ago, you have a hard time selling to investors, just like I had at Wall Street or started here. But needless to say, Dr. Blake, of course, superintendent the year last year, continuing the trend this year, as you've heard earlier from Annie, we have principal of the year. Congratulations, Mr. Stack. All of these staff members, and you should bring something to the table for your students, my students, my children, your children. Did you know that Samborn Athletics represents, there's one in three students that are in the athletics program from middle school to high school? One in three students participate. That's intense. More importantly, we're nationally regularly recognized for our sportsmanship awards. Some like this, some don't like this, but the truth of matters, again, recognized. Your children get recognized for the community, the person for which they are. The word sportsmanship is about them walking out that door and representing the community well. So congratulations to you again for helping to help with that. Samborn Arts, Michael would love to come up here and talk about all the great things that he can and will do and has done, some of the beautiful voices you've heard earlier today. Take part in those award-winning programs. Congratulations and thank you very much for entertaining me. The Samborn Music Program. Last year, we had a pretty cool event take place. We had all, like the entire Autar County, Gen amazing, we sold out. I recommend you take a look at that. But we currently have 25,2 students that are in the music program. And by the way, in the last year and a half, we've been, we have 13 students been honored by the NHBDA. Moving on, continuing the, how proud we are of our students. As in, we have 24% of our students who are currently enrolled in college courses today in high school. I wish I had an opportunity when I was in college. 24% of our children are actually enrolled in college courses. Talk about getting college career ready, they're already actually making their strides today while balancing life, stress, and sports. Of that, those 24% are becoming part of 51% who were graduating class last year, oh, are graduating class last year, 51% were New Hampshire Spartans. Congratulations to them, and thank you very much to parents who helped support that. We looked at the number earlier, the system rating is pretty intense. I want to talk about our students going places and actually being, you know, making strides. Because of the education, this is the testament, 82% of our students are returning for a second year of college. The national average is 70. That means that these staff members up behind you, the leadership team here, have put forth an opportunity for your children to excel. So when we question, are we giving kids the right education? Are we giving them an opportunity to succeed down the road? Well, our law line is showing that 82% versus 70, that's awesome. So thank you, staff. Let's focus on you now and myself, part of the community. As recognized, we've been nationally recognized, as you've heard, for being first in the nation, first in the nation from pace assessment. A totally different opportunity to go ahead and bring education to the community, new assessments. I don't want to say anything about that because it's not my domain. I won't speak about something that's not my domain. That's what the school board does. We let others speak for themselves. You're nationally recognized by the Lurie Tool Board, $50,000 of the grant offsetting any other taxes that we had to go ahead and pay. Why do we have our money? Because we're always getting grants. Congratulations and thank you. And let me just take a step back and bring it home a little bit further. This year, we have 44 different students who are participating in partnerships, in actual internships. More importantly, we have over another 100 students who are doing job sharing and mind training, just testing, you know, just shadowing. So thank you very much to all the communities, and if I left your name either, I'm sorry there's almost so much on the slide, probably the whole presentation about you, but Neil said, thank you, and I'm loving a lot of lights to red. All this being said, 15 months ago, we were mentioned in a pretty cool magazine, a pretty cool article called Getting Smart. Getting Smart said Samborn is number four in the nation of suburban school districts to visit. Did you hear that? How many of you raised hands knew that? How many raised hands knew? Not a whole lot. So I want everyone here to give a round of applause, because you guys helped pay a really good amount of money. Thank you very much, and I now do need to get to the budget. That all being said, there is some stress. I am stressed, you're stressed, we're all stressed, because it's busy budget season. I'm budget season, actually, for last year, basically. So, your school board has set out our budget process. The budget process is, you know, we, as a team, question just how do we provide 21st century learning and support change for all of our students in these tough economic times? How do we go ahead with, close the gap as it's continually widening and as our pockets get less and less soft? Neil said, we put together a timeline. You might have heard earlier, and I'm not going to go back and forth here, but you said there was only one meeting about that. I think this will show you that there was more than one meeting, and there's a lot more sentiment behind the budget number. I know I'm not getting sleep anymore. Sorry, I need to adjust my screen here. So, we started off in September, October, with, as you can see here, I'm not going to worry you of reading everything. You know, basically, we set goals, and November, December, when Dr. Blake brought forth his budget, proposed budget, we, obviously, we reviewed it, we analyzed it, we engaged as a team, we engaged as individuals. So again, just because we had one meeting in public doesn't mean that we're not actively working. We then went ahead in January, February, with the question answering, with you, the community, and we then further engaged, we further developed our number, which really didn't come to fruition until two weeks ago. And then we helped, we're now obviously informing, as you've heard, and putting information out there. Now we're here, at almighty voting time. So how did this all come together? The school board went ahead and charged with the superintendent's goals and guidelines. We asked it to present top and social priorities down to a clean document structure that both Budget Committee and School Board and you could look at, be very confused by, and have a lot of questions on, and make a lot of assumptions. But that's what the business administrator is there for, to answer our questions and help us. She's been in the data, and I appreciate that data, Carol. Needless to say, take a look at, these are all the things that we charge a superintendent with. So when that number came forth, I knew that that number that he was going to present was going to represent truth, validity, and accountability of what he needed along with his staff to, again, continue to win awards. Furthermore, the goal set, we had a theme for our budget, you know, developed structure, made sure that the budget practices, you know, just simple things, just give you more sentiment behind it, you can read this, but there was a structure, a plan, and an execution behind all of this. It wasn't hapless. It wasn't happens. It wasn't a thoughtful process. The school board, on the other hand, we ourselves, charge ourselves to make sure when the superintendent brings this budget, I need help over here somewhere. I'm not really that sure. Alright, I just want to do my final questions. So the budget sustainability, we want to make sure that the budget track that was being put forth was sustainable, knowing very well that we as taxpayers have challenges thinking two years down the road, where are we going to be? Thinking two years down the road, what is the school going to be? Can this be something that we can sustain as a community? But more importantly, can this budget that's being put forth complement the need, the necessary conversation of passing the teacher's contract? Fair, ethical decisions seem to even have to be made. More importantly, knowing, rounding it out was a 360 degree view. We looked at from all aspects, what's the budget? What's the staff? What's the warrant articles that are going to take place? 360 degree view. To me, it was not enough, right? We worked hard and we knew what we were doing well. So furthermore, as you heard earlier, and I apologize for any redundancy, I'll try to skip over as much as possible, the superintendent did propose his budget. He, yes, he did meet all of his goals. So good job, Dr. Blake. And I want you to take a quick look at that because if you really look at that budget book, and if you have any questions, how did he meet his goals? Or you can go to mason@gmail@bradysmason17.org, email me. Jack knows I get back to him often, right? Get him, Jack. Alright, so what did the superintendent do? You heard earlier, the superintendent had new budget initiatives. The proposed budget includes new initiatives, special education programs that directly relate to student needs, that come and go, that can happen any given day. We have plenty of homes for sale, we have plenty of apartments for rent, we have anyone, everyone who might want to move into town. So the point being is, these new budget initiatives happen because of our community growing, happen because of additional student needs, special education needs for that matter. More importantly, it's also important to acknowledge that the district is always in transition. And you can also see that the leadership team was cautious of that. And by being cautious of that, you can see on the right hand side, they already decreased before the budget committee got the numbers, staff members. They pre, you know, they pre-warned themselves and they said, "We need these classroom teachers, these classroom teachers can be removed today." And they informed us why, and how, and what's the return investment of the new staff members that we bring in. So you can see here, clear as day, the Dr. Blake had put forth, new initiatives, old and what's going to be replaced with that. 353 page book and 123 page capital improvement. That's all I'm showing you. There's a lot behind it. Budget numbers, the superintendent, as you heard, came to the table with a number that was less than the default. And yes, it was 34682057, which was 41,000 plus than the default budget. Yet, I was concerned that that wasn't enough. Yes, the school board was concerned that wasn't enough. We dug deep. The school board dug deeper by again, starting reviewing our goals. We took into account, of course, the taxpayers in our communities. What can you afford? What can I afford? What can the rest of the board afford? We did not want to jeopardize any of the exceptional academic growth that would have taken and implements. And of course, again, passing staff contracts, one compliments the other. I want to take a step back here. For those of you who don't know this, and maybe it is later, but I know many of you will probably leave and I respect that. This, your staff and your ladies and gentlemen up there, have had five out of the last 10 years, worked without a teacher's contract. Five out of 10 years without a raise. Five out of 10 years not feeling important. Five out of 10 years of in support. We ask why staff will leave it? I don't think we can go any further. Of course, we then obviously looked at warrant articles, and when we reviewed them, during this process, we put forth two warrant articles, life safety items. That's it. Life safety, sad. So the school board did debate on many areas. We did debate on the new budget request. We did look into the replacement equipment, we did throw the delve into the furniture fixtures, why, asked why. Mr. Broderick had his pencil out and his little pieces of paper flying. It was awesome. Guidance staffing, athletics, support athletics, I can't believe I don't even think about athletics because I don't know how many students participate, but we're looking to go, where to go? Because we can't remove academics, so programs become a topic. Staffing, had to delve into those numbers. Information services, IT, we just went one to one. How in the world can we go ahead and reduce the numbers from IT for one to one now? Makes no sense. Capital improvements. So again, take a look at that screen right there, when you hear, did we work on it? We refocused again, took a step back, while taxpayers, community culture, school board budget, ABA life statement. We then before the number, yes, that was level funded. Which was really interesting because it's not, if a level funded budget, 142,791, when we hear people asking, this is not, what is this number? You can see in the prior slides, it wasn't an arbitrary number, as we moved to earlier by common. We, the school board, acknowledge 100%, you cannot name names because losses can happen and you're not going to go ahead and threaten the life of a staff member. We're humans. And then they're protected by immunity. And once you go ahead and start putting positions up there and saying, where are you taking money? How do you, how do you think that's going to impact the kids? How do you think when you go ahead and threaten to remove this position, it's going to impact the lady and gentleman coming to class the next day? If you like working with fear, I would love to know how to do it. Warrant articles we submitted, we looked at, these are warrant articles, which are mandates, may have only on the operating budgets, so I don't want to kind of waste your time here. I want to take a quick step back and review now. The budget committee did submit their number, and yes, they did work hard and understanding stuff. And I applaud them for that, no doubt about it. Sanborn, you'll notice that they did compare our district to these communities, a big accident on the hill, Louis River, Pellon, ready to Sanborn, state average in term of life. It is true, the BUCOM did share a student enrollment trend. It is a true statement that this is what that million dollars looks like. Look, every single line item there, look at the first half, talking about building a budget for students, building a budget for culture, building a budget for community, all those things that said thanks earlier too, this is jeopardizing that. You have the administration, you have leadership team, you have support staff, you have teachers on top of the operating teachers I just showed you. Every which way you turn, this budget reduction impacts my child. Every which way this turns, it impacts me, knowing that my child's in the best education, the reason why he moved there four years ago. Small town, small classroom sizes. I ask you, if every department in your business, wherever you work, is cut, you want to go there the next day? Why? So again, a million dollars came from what? What? It came from the success that we've built. The success of our children's future. So smaller to new handout, yeah, I'll share with you. I'm sorry to math coordinator, sorry to the guidance, you know. So the proposal resident, it definitely impacts community culture and students. I don't know how it happens. So the school board wants to share some really cool facts with you. And I'm sorry, you heard all of this earlier, yes, it's a true statement, 10 years, we answer, we have a problem. We have a decline in enrollment, we have a problem with the nation as a positive. Why? Oh, because there's other schools out there. Why? Because of popping up everywhere. Why? Because we want to give choices to our children and to ourselves. So long story short, state enrollment's down over 30% in the last 10 years, and we're down to 11%. Not too bad. Let's also take a look, obviously, as you heard me belt out earlier, 1.9. We're up. Well, we have a decline in enrollment, our actual classroom size is around about two. And then it's the teacher ratio, yeah, we're at 10.8. And I won't talk more about that momentarily. I'm going to get to that. So again, teacher salary, talking about culture support, and in the BUCOM, budget committee supports teacher's contract, thumbs up. I just want to remind ourselves that this past year, a Sanborn teacher is making nearly $1,900 less than they did in fall 2013. How are we going to bring in good, qualified student staff? How are we going to bring in a season better, more paying less? Okay, so I want to take a step further step back. We've heard the budget committee go ahead and prepare the budget, and they looked at all the school districts like I just showed you. What happens if we can start comparing us to them? Because I think that's where they created their budget from, right? The number that is being used and that we're showing, that we're showing to you, that million plus dollars, there's comparison. So hmm, it's a true statement, 10 years, doing this massive big chart, over the last 10 years, yes, Sanborn's lost 219 students. Pellon's lost 192. But if you look at the percentages, we're 11.3. Timberland's lost what? 19 plus. Exeter's lost, no, Exeter's gaining because the community's obviously busting. So the point being here is, every single one of these communities that this, that was compared to, has had a decline in enrollment. Our numbers are a little bit less when it comes to percentage wise, because that's what we really should be looking at, percentages. If you go ahead and take a look here, the, I need to take a step back and ask you all, reading what I wrote here, "Louis River grades five of the eight class sizes in the non-record course in the Hampshire Department of Education, thus they do not factor in the numbers on the charts to my left." What number do you believe? What number can I believe? What number can I use? How can I compare apples to apples? You can't. Why? Because every community's different, because every student's needs are different. Right? So long story short, let's remind ourselves that all of this here reflects Sanborn providing in-house, this number right here reflects Sanborn providing in-house special education services where many other communities do not. Why do we have an average class size that's 18? Because we provide services. You've empowered staff here to go ahead and get a more personalized learning environment, to give you guys, your students, my children, an opportunity to have an in-house program instead of doing out of district. I'm not sure if you've ever heard of out of district, if you moved here because you didn't want the out of district? But the point being is, those out of district students that we could be shipping out, cost 150 to a quarter million dollars or more per kid on average. That's a big variance, I understand, so why don't you put 20,000, you have five kids, 200,000 dollars, a million bucks. They're taking care of that here, to keep your taxpayers' way down. That's stuff that you don't hear, that's the truth you need to hear. Stuff that I learned over the last year. So needless to say, I want to let you show, look at this display about students, teacher ratios, non-measure of average class size. I downloaded that at work, this is at the very bottom. So when you're comparing apples to apples, they're telling you right now, you can't. True? Makes sense? Okay, I want to, so again, teacher salary, we're down. Not good on her, I won't go over to it, we're talking about that. So yes, I'm almost there guys, I'm almost there. Alright, so I'm going to share these two things. We've heard, if this school district was turning negative, we're 700 plus thousand, 700,000 dollars year after year, and that's a professional in that position, sorry, Miss Carol, I'm calling you out here, someone else said, they're doing a pretty poor and effective job. Budget committee member. Budget committee member went ahead and indicated that we are doing a poor job because we have money left over at the end of the year. Same thing, money's flushing around, therefore the budget pulse is a flat 30, we don't have a revenue problem, we have a money management problem. Let me show you something. Then zoom in here. So if you notice here on this slide, and I apologize, you don't have this, and again, I'll give it to you, it's yours. These are the districts. You'll notice I'm missing Epping and Litchfield. I'm missing Epping and Litchfield for two reasons. The data is hard to get. I had our business administrator help me try to get this information, we're not going to put any information out there that's not valid. I could have faked the numbers, but I didn't, because the truth is, it's not fair to you and fair to me when making a decision. You'll notice here, I want you to pay attention to both the budget. Over the last three years, between fiscal year 15, that's from summer 2014, or excuse me, from summer 2014 to 15, July to June, from 14 to 17, in rainy, they have a 1%, 0.01% increase. In Exeter, their budget had an increase of 1.1. In Sanborn, we had a 1%. In Louis River, 1.07, Pellon, 1.08, Timberland, 1.04. Interesting. We're comparing ourselves to other communities right now, whose enrollment has increased. That's why I'm quick focused on here. Our enrollment has increased just like the rest of them have too, not nearly as bad. We're 1.9 compared to Pellon, 2.3, and Timberland, 3.1 in the last couple of years. Furthermore, now let's take it deeper. So you can see, our budget, less the actuals, budget being like, what do we budget for? And what did you improve? And what are we paying? You can see, we're normalized. Normalized here. Again, theme here is money management problem. Let's go ahead and look at the budget with the actuals. You'll notice, again, the budget with the actuals, I apologize, this is so small and it's hard to look at. In the end, we're again normalized. We are actually, I want to really skip to this one, because again, the money that we're getting, the actuals, we're spending money, as you know, on our selves and our students. Ourselves being the future growth of our community, because the number one investment in any community's school system, right? Here, here. So needless to say, I want you to show like this unspent, back to that flushing around money management problem. If the budget committee looked at their data and looked at what they presented, they would realize that ultimately, we're no different. We are better. Our budget, our business administrator is going to do an improving job. Our business administrator is going to do, do share your responsibility, right? Is that how I pronounce it, Mr. Ryder? Our business administrator is always put us in a position to be in the best student's, look at, 3% compared to Pellon, 6%, Timberland, 6%. On the right hand side, I have a quote, $700,000, is that what we saw earlier? Every one of these communities for which the budget committee went ahead and compared themselves to, is well above $700,000 left over annually. Well above. Mind me, but they're smaller than us. Pellon doesn't, they're, it's just not, again, so where is the truth in all the numbers? In summary, we heard this evening, the budget committee chair, after interviewing the leadership, that they had identified nearly 1.8 million dollars of cuts. I can, I can identify 10 million of cuts. I can identify 20 million of cuts. What kind of education do I want? More importantly, after those interviews, what did the superintendent recommend? What did the principals recommend? What did the athletic director recommend? They identified, not the other party they interviewed. It's very challenging, you discard the facts and you make your own decision. And you speak of it, and then you, me, we hear that. Question authority. The cuts definitely impacted culture, the community, and our students. I definitely feel as though, and I'm really excited, again, that cut doesn't support the guidance director, that cut doesn't go ahead and support the math coordinator, that cut doesn't go ahead and help the French teacher, or the family consumer science teacher, or the memorial teacher, which we don't need to remove, because you can see that we are removing staff, substitute staffing. What's going to happen at the end of the year with a $50,000 cut to substitute staffing? Where are we going to get student work? And if someone calls and say? Where is the balance in that? Cusor of the staff, this building's in technical shape, it's 10 years old, it's brand new. Bathroom's new, bathroom's a bathroom. But the point being is, how are you supposed to go ahead and operate a business? But, the point being is, how are you supposed to go ahead and operate a business if every corner of the building is being marred? Non-union staff. The lifeline besides the cusory. In the end, the school board one hundred percent recommends our proposed budget of thirty-four million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. And more importantly, in the end, I hope you realize that the number that you saw and had heard from the budget committee impacts the community, the culture, and the future. More importantly, there's integrity to be questioned there. Integrity, because I'll show you the numbers, they're just not aligned. Thank you very much, community. I appreciate the thought.
Good morning. Very good afternoon. I'd like to make a motion to add back five hundred thousand, five hundred dollars to the budget committee's proposed operating budget. So then the revised budget figure would be thirty-four. So that the revised budget figure would be thirty-four million, one hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Do a second. Go ahead, speak to your motion. Um, today we heard two very, very different presentations. The budget committee chair spoke about cooperation in the administration, but in fact, there really is very little cooperation. A lot of disregard for what the administration presented. A lot of what I would politely call alternative facts presented in their presentation. Well, let's, the signature motion, the second presentation was, was what the school board, the information that was provided, which was worked and put together cooperatively, and was confirmed, information was converted and verified, and what was presented was factual. That said, I think we all recognize the importance of making sure that the professional staff contract gets approved, gets awarded, and it's very, very important. And so, the number that I am recommending is a compromise between the two. The way that the number was arrived at was a recognition of the fact that the superintendent's proposed budget already had some very substantial cuts to staff in that budget proposed, and took into account the declining student enrollment. And so, those are the things that have, and then the budget committee went and cut, made additional staff on top of that. And those are the things that I'm proposing to be added back. The ones that the staff, that the budget committee closed over and above what the superintendent had already proposed. Those things include two, uh, so the superintendent had proposed to cut huge classroom teaching staff from middle school. One, at the memorial elementary school, a specialized teacher at Memorial, baking in the high school. But then the budget committee recommended on top of that also cutting an additional memorial school teacher, suggesting that the high school reduces its family consumer science teacher to a half-time position, suggested that the high school reduces a French teacher to a half-position, eliminated the math coordinator that serves kid through eight, and the high school guidance director, which they are calling an administrative position. And when you add back those additional staff cuts that the budget committee made, those numbers come to three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Or those are the cuts that they recommend, but when you add those back, it's three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Then, the budget committee suggested to cut the non-union staff salary cut, and I recommend adding that portion back, and that's an additional forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. The budget committee further recommended cutting maintenance services budget by a hundred thousand dollars. So, to restore most of that reduction, I'm recommending adding back ninety-one thousand dollars into the maintenance service budget. We need to make sure that we're taking care of the maintenance services. When you add up those items, it comes to five hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. It is still less than the school board's and the superintendent's proposed budget, but I think it is a more horrible choice than what the budget committee has proposed. And I think it would increase the chances that we will be able to get the professional staff contract approved.
Thank you. Now, before you go any further, we had a fellow post who was on thumb drive, asking Scott on the computer, which I said, okay, but I said, he wanted to make a presentation with the use of the thing, and said it would be about ten minutes or so. And I said, well, I put it to a vote, if people are okay with that, that's fine. If you're not, then he could probably speak from the floor. And so, are people okay with that? I think, have you all been?
No.
Well, all right. All right, let's just take, this should be fairly simple. All of her favor, let him have his, his thumb drive, and he can keep the presentation for ten minutes, and get hold of that. That's what he said he would take. We've listened to some pretty long ones so far. All of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those in opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. So, I guess, I was given the opportunity to speak, obviously, from the floor, so chooses to present from the floor. Anyway, the floor now open for debate, discussion, comment. Surely, oh, sure.
Hi, Michael Jordan with a second. For the record, not to be confused with my father, for those who don't know us, we are very different people. For listening to Don Callum, I've served as the student representative to the board for the past few months, and I have had an exciting time. And I'm so proud and excited to see this many people here tonight that share my passion for public politics. So, thank you guys all for coming very much. So, as an honorary member of the board, for lack of better terms, in the past few months, I've been heavily involved with the budget creation process, attending every school board meeting since March, and attending many of the budget committee meetings in the weeks after the superintendent proposed his budget in the beginning of the school year. I've heard and been involved in thoughtful discussions about the budget for the year to come. My elected officials in person state that they want to put forth a budget that does not have a negative impact on the students in our district. And of course, I would love to have that happen. I don't believe that the budget committee is against the students in our district. I believe that our elected officials have both the students' best interest and the town's best interests at heart. However, I disagree with some of the recommendations that have been put forth. Included in the recommendations that we are here and have seen tonight to discuss are the following. A math coordinator that the administration has reported to both governing bodies that are present tonight as a successful endeavor. A guidance director that, among hundreds of other duties, oversees the success of our students in their post-high school aspirations. A consumer science teacher with an average class size of seventeen point five, who also doubles as the student council vice crew, in my opinion, the high school gains presence throughout the entire day. And as the public relations person for the student council, I can promise you, I'd be lost without her. And our only French teacher, who has eighty-one students, who has first six classes in her program, that, by the way, I must stress, is run by her and only her. Thus, taken for the only staff member qualified to write letters of recommendation for any students who take French. There is nobody else. We've talked about student retention tonight. I think that's been a pretty, pretty important part to talk about. As a person who has spent a knee-deep, insane, or four years in the schools, learning from these people, I cannot agree with the budget that the budget committee has created. I appreciate the amount of work they have put into this budget, and honestly, who can disagree with responsible spending? But in order to have a budget in which the students are least affected, we must retain these positions. I ask the community today to help me in creating and retaining a learning environment in which our students thrive, to go on and represent the community with greatest minds in whichever paths they choose to walk. A diverse environment attracts people to our towns and creates well-rounded students who will graduate this district and serve our communities in only the way that Sanborn experiences can teach them. Retaining a diverse environment is why you see so many students getting involved today in our local politics, and so many students in that room helping babysit your kids. Today, I had a junior, part of the class of 2018, ask me a question that I couldn't possibly answer. She said, Mike, how would you possibly cut a, close to a million dollars from our education and still expect us to succeed? To that, I had no answer. Our students are worried. Our students are scared. I hope you consider this, and the perspective and impact on our students, my kids, your kids, our future, when you pass your vote tonight. Thank you.
To John here, go ahead, please, come to everyone else, please. Please, just show that effect, so we're all showing.
My name is Donna, I'm new.
So, listen to all these numbers. Million dollars, wow, that's a lot. Guess what, guys? Twenty-five dollars a month, that's all it took. But did you shoot this, or say this? Donna, I'm new again. Just Donna, tell them, thank you, very appreciate it. So, very quickly, about twenty-five dollars a month. That's a tank of gas. Okay. Other discipline, you wish to speak, man? Come down, please.
Hi, I'm Karen Leal, I'm from Kinston. So, I had, I want to say that because it's been so contentious, and passions have been flying so high that I didn't want to get bogged down in all the back and forth that I've witnessed. I'm one of four the three-year Kinston School Board seat. I've got a Master of Education. I've been a public school teacher in middle school for the better part of the last decade. And I've got kids who've gone through Sanborn from kindergarten to high school. I'm also here. I've got some observations that I feel like I need to share from reading the minutes from the budget committee meetings and the school board meetings, and watching the videos, and looking at all the data that's been thrown around. And I think it was a really nice juxtaposition tonight about what you can do depending on what information you choose to show. And it emphasizes the importance that I hope the voters here have taken the time, which I did when I said, geez, if I'm on the school board, and you really understand what's going on, and look at the minutes from the meetings yourself, and look at the videos yourself, and ask yourself, who is really taking the essence of public education to heart and really looking out for protecting public education in our towns? Clearly, there's a deep division in our community, which has unfortunately led to attacks on talented and dedicated administrators and teachers. As somebody who has a kid right now in eighth grade, I totally know that the teachers have been working without a contract for about half the time. I also am shocked and dismayed that one of the things that the budget committee used to reduce the budget is saying, well, they should take a vacation from the administrators getting raises this year. We've got a superintendent who was superintendent of the year last year. We've got a high school principal who is the principal of the year this year. And a 2016 impact award recipient. We have numerous teachers that are going above and beyond every single day to do stuff with students that isn't part of the core curriculum, but is certainly enriching the lives of these kids and us as a community. The idea that we are not going to give some type of equitable payment or raise to people who are going above and beyond, getting accolades, our district is winning awards, just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't think most people are aware, maybe you are, I don't know, we're losing four administrators at the end of this year. You also want to be trusted to know that right now, on EdJobs, which is where educators go to find jobs, in the past month, just for New Hampshire, there are sixteen administrative positions open. And that's not even counting Massachusetts, which is right next door. I think that's a whole lot more than New Hampshire districts do. So, our district is going to be competing with probably, at least, at minimum, sixteen other districts in New Hampshire, not in Massachusetts, to get the best, most qualified academic leaders. And they are leaders. We have leaders in our schools right now. We have leadership from the top down, and we have teachers that are leaders. We have had a mass exodus of staff over the last several years from this district. And you are foolish if you think that that isn't because of a lot of the negativity and not contracts passing in this district. I was embarrassed going to the polls last year to see my kids' teachers out there with signs, please support our teachers. That is an embarrassment to me as a community member. Our public school teachers should not have been out there holding a sign saying, please support me, because we can see what they do every day. I just, it's embarrassing. I think the choice boils down to this. You've got a couple different visions for the budget here. Mr. What? Mr. Luck has put forth a very nice compromise, which is a spirit which I haven't seen looking at the minutes and the video of a certain way that I've observed. So, you have a choice before you. If you think the people most qualified to decide what the schools need are the people in the schools, day after day, working with kids and teachers and parents, then you won't be satisfied with the budget committee's grossly underfunded school budget. However, if you believe that a handful of people on the budget committee who don't actually have any responsibility to lock in their schools every day and ensure that each and every student, each and every student, the student who needs enrichment, and the student who needs a one-on-one because they tend to get through their day without it, and all of those things in between, if you think they should determine what the schools spend, then you'll think the budget's just fine, because it's cheaper, and everybody likes cheaper. Everybody likes a burger. As for me, somebody who works in the public schools, has kids in the public schools, and wants to have pride in my community, I'm going to trust the people who have dedicated their lives to public education and supporting the public schools. So, I will never support a budget that just undercuts funding for the schools, regardless of what kind of a nice PowerPoint package it's in. I'm gonna leave you with one final thought, because I love analogies, and my husband hates that. Kids love junk food. They like to eat it because it tastes good, it's often cheaper, and certainly easier for me to buy and cook than to prepare healthy meals for them. But responsible parents don't feed their kids junk food, day in and day out, because they know that the long-term effects of that are bad for their kids. I think the budget committee has put forth a budget equivalent to junk food. It looks good. It's cheap. It satisfies the immediate desires of some local and very aggravated community members. But in the long term, it is bad for Kingston and Newton, and I don't care whether you're a parent that has it in the school system or not.
For the rest of the ready, my name is Jameson.
Ready, ready chat, Mike, a little bit for you, David.
Okay, I'll rest on the duty. I was the one that had the presentation, so it won't be as effective. We have to present the facts, but I'll present them nonetheless. We were here last year, the administration wanted... We were here last year, the administration wanted a thirty-five point four million dollar budget, delivered a pass to thirty-four point one million dollar budget, and the electorate passed the default budget of thirty-four point four million. Where we are today, the actual spending, through October, we were flat. Through November, we were spending less than seventeen hundred or sixteen. Through December, we're spending a bit more, about three hundred thousand. You take the actuals from the superintendent's proposal of thirty-three point eight million that occurred in FY16, you add the three hundred thousand, you're at the thirty-four point one million, is the rate that we're at now, which was the rate that was passed up to deliver the last year. So it is funding the education regardless. The spending comparisons would show that thirty-five point four million requested by the administration actually exceeds current spending by one point six million dollars. The enrollment trends, we talked about the enrollment trends, we showed that enrollment was going down and the percentages are, it's going down at a faster rate as time goes forward. So projections are, decreases in enrollment are going to be increasing, the percent decline. So to me, it's not so important as to which community I'm comparing myself against. It's more important as to what are we doing about it? The fundamental structure is shifting and it needs to be addressed. Also, what we've seen happen in the past year, and I've heard all the accolades and all the wonderful things that have gone on, those are all fine and dandy. The achievement of work that I would like to see best is a Sandmore Regional School District has more than twenty-eight percent people proficient in math. So all these other statements of awards and articles and magazines don't mean as much as children being proficient in math. We're down from thirty-one to twenty-eight percent in math. We're down from sixty-six to fifty-five percent in reading. While at the same time, the state averages are up. And for questions as to where this dataset comes from, you go to the New Hampshire Department of Education, it's right there if you see it's going to the achievement comparisons. So the overall, a lot of discussion about the spending. I'll just point out that if you take into account enrollment changes, the administration's proposal was a nine point one percent increase in spending per student. The thirty-three point seven million that's on the warrant is still a five point six percent spending increase per student. So if you're spending more per student, then the students have the money coming their way and you have to look at the structure that's supporting it. The other thing that's mentioned is the capital budget. You'll see in the warrant, there's a number warrant, we're supposed to take there the one point two million capital budget. Even the Budcom Northwest School Board talked about what's around the corner. The capital budget in FY19 is not one point two million, it's four point six million. You take the contract amounts that are out there, so the support staff and the teacher staff. You have five hundred eighty thousand about in year one. You've got another million fifty in year two. So you're looking at an additional, in addition to the four point six million, looking at additional one point six million. I got my math wrong. Total five point eight million in off-budget spending coming our way next year. So again, structurally, we need to be addressing this. So one of the things that I heard last year, before I get to that, the spending levels in FY19 to meet the cap plan and to meet the contract levels are almost twenty percent higher than the current spending levels of 2017. Not two or three percent, twenty, two zero percent higher spending is what the current plan is for this community. I've heard people mention something, just mentioned before, it's a tank of gas, last year was a cup of coffee. Well, it's a cup of coffee a day, our children are worth a cup of coffee a day. So let me tell you what a cup of coffee a day costs. See, with that, if you donate a small coffee, a dollar eighty-four, three percent interest on your money, dolaring for first year, it's seven hundred dollars. By the time your child is in first grade, six years old, it's four thousand four hundred dollars. By the time they enter high school, fourteen years old, it's eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. By the time they enter college, it's sixteen thousand dollars. By the time they graduate college, it's twenty thousand nine hundred dollars that you did not put in the bank to support your child, they now have twenty thousand nine hundred dollars in debt. So a cup of coffee a day is pretty darn expensive when you add it up over twenty-two years. The other item I'd point out is it's not just about the schools. Schools are very important, they take the lion's share of the money, the communities also have these. There's a one point seven million dollar firehouse requirement for Newton that we hope to pass. There is two hundred thousand dollars that the county Kingston is looking for for fire equipment. There's two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars for the county Kingston looking for for paving. If all the oxygen in the room is sucked out by what the school needs, the only options that voters are going to have is to just blanket reject all the warrants. So I would warn you that if you just fill the gills of the school board, you're going to find in March, people are just going to say no all the way down to the pox on moldy houses. Thank you. Please support the thirty-five point six.
Don't be intimidated, I've heard a lot of people here, I haven't spoken that's intimidating, but don't, you know, you're all trying to get some, hopefully.
Anybody who knows me knows that I'm not in the video. I'm Danielle Harris from Newton.
Can you try to speak into that mic?
Sure.
Just, what can you say?
Um, Danielle Harris.
Danielle Harris.
Yes. And I'm not running for this campaign.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we know. So I've heard a neighbor speak, I've heard esteemed members of the staff speak, and I just have a quick few points that I wanted to make tonight. Most of them are taken from both presentations, actually, especially the Budcom's one. So I find it contradictory itself a lot. So we have a math problem. I've heard that from Budcom, I've heard that from the school board, and I've heard that from some of our peers here, but we want to get rid of the math part here. So we have an issue with student retention, right? We have people dropping off, going to other schools, other schools are more attractive, private schools, all that. So students are leaving, but we want to get rid of the VR person. We also want to get rid of some of the teachers that are driving into this school. Our administration has done an amazing job. Who in their job ever gets awarded best anything and doesn't expect a raise? And I'm not talking about a lot of money here, but nothing? You get that kind of recognition and nothing, you should have to take a year off from getting a raise. We have teachers and they're leaving. And we're further damaging the morale by the proposed budget cuts. I agree with Mr. Pluck's compromise. I appreciate that the compromise is happening today, it's fantastic, well, that isn't what I heard. And I know a coffee cup a day does add up and over time, our kids could be looking at school debt, but we can get them to college. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more thing. And you have to apologize for my ignorance on how these discussions go, but I hear from Budcom, I hear from the administration, and I hear from a lot of my peers here that we really need the teachers' contract to pass. I also agree with my neighbor that if we, our residents tend to see money, 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 and no, 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 no. So I have a question. If the teacher contract doesn't pass this year, is there a way we can have it rolled into the budget in early years so it's not a warrant? No?
Okay, no. Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
You're not, Jason, do you mind if I ask? Hold on. You've already spoken once and it's recommended, I'll let people come back to you if you would like to speak a second time. I'd like to give everyone an opportunity one time, and they'll come back and repeat, and that's right. Did you, did you wish to speak? Or are you just standing?
Well, yeah, I was actually, I, oh. I have a kind of personality. I was actually going to, I thought folks were ready to vote, so I was going to make a motion, I was going to move a question.
I probably wink a little bit on that, I mean, you have, this is Baker, and a couple more here. I mean, obviously, when we voted, we voted on the amendment of five hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. And obviously, the result of that is they're going to tell us our need to go. So we'll find that out shortly, but let's have some other people who would like to speak, speak. Then we'll, Dan, move the question, move the vote, and see how it goes. Go ahead, Miss Baker.
Thank you. My name is Jim Baker.
Be right in there.
My name is Jim Baker. We're here tonight, obviously, we've got big decisions to make. The cups of coffee, the visions that we've heard about, the comparisons between towns as far as retaining funds, as far as classroom sizes. I want to add a little bit of additional comparisons that have to do with our competitiveness as a town and our tax situation, personally. We saw the towns of Timberlake, Rayland, Pell, Wasteland River, and Exeter up on the screen tonight. Exeter, if you're by a house in Exeter, at their tax rate of fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents for the school, twenty-six, twenty-four for Exeter, the median home price in Exeter, according to cityguy.com, is two hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. That's a seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollar annual tax bill. That's eighteen percent below Newton and that's seventeen percent below Kingston. That's right now, that's before ready increases tonight. Wasteland River, let's talk about assessed values. Wasteland River has a one billion, billion, seven hundred and twenty-six million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand assessed value. That's a hundred and twenty-two percent above the assessed value of Newton and Kingston combined. As far as class sizes go, Wasteland River's class sizes are ten point four percent larger than Newton, or Kingston, or Sandmore, excuse me. Pell, one billion, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, no, six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar assessment. Hundred and twenty-one percent above Sandmore. Thirty-four percent, thirty-four percent higher class sizes than Sandmore. Let me give you one more. Timberlake, our neighbor, two billion, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Hundred and fourteen percent above the assessment of Sandmore. Seven point five percent higher class sizes. That's what we're looking at, that's what all these cups of coffee add up to for us. As far as our, some other neighbors, Atkinson, with their total tax rate of nineteen-ten on an average size house, thirty-three percent lower cost per year in taxes than Newton. I want to favor pay my fair share. I've been living in Newton for twenty-nine years. When I first moved here, my taxes were two percent of my after-federal tax income. Now it's ten percent. My social security and my healthcare costs take up seventy-five percent, my healthcare costs and my property taxes take up seventy-five percent of my social security tax. Other people are paying twenty to thirty percent of their after-federal tax income. How much more can we pay? How much is fair? So I have a dilemma tonight. I can't support this budget increase and the teacher's contract and the ADA compliance. I want to support the teacher's contract and the ADA compliance. So I'm going to vote no on this amendment to raise the budget, the five hundred thousand dollars or whatever it was. Thank you for your time. I'm Jim Baker, I'm running for school board in Newton. Thank you.
I have to, I hope there's no deep, tough comments here. Mr. Baker. Didn't, what was it, go ahead.
Kurt Baker, I'm not running for school board. It disgusts me, I worked twelve years on this school board. I worked on this building that you sit in. I worked on bringing Fremont back to Kingston. I worked on bringing a public kindergarten, what a concept, to our community. I worked for these teachers to have a fair contract when I first started on the board, when Mr. Broderick sat on the board, I mean, he was a teacher. We were one of the lowest, and then we just had a little increase, and then all of a sudden, it ran away. I can't believe that we brought Washington to this district. Washington is corrupt. And all you guys up there and your facts and neighbors, the only thing I know is if our education system continues to go down, my neighbors' house value will go down and my value will go down. And the interest that I have in my house, if I want to take a loan or anything, is gone. The school board will attest, as my time away, I've come acting as a last in the school board that time. You headed out of the park tonight, Mr. Mason.
All right, let's, let's.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, you headed out of the park tonight. I disagree with you a lot, but tonight, you headed out of the park. This is what's at stake here. And I'm sick and tired of the pickering and false. I don't even read the carriage stamp anymore because it's false information. If it's okay to disagree if you don't want the budget to increase, it's okay. It's okay if you want to. We're all human beings, we all stood up tonight to pledge allegiance as a community. You don't have to hate people who have a disagreement of what you're talking about. We're compassionate people. Washington doesn't compromise. This community better wake up and compromise because I'm not going to live and I will fight, I will run for school board.
But I want to say, if they have something new to add to the debate, add it. This is going to get up and say, I'm for, I'm against, I'm for, I'm against it. Then probably get saying, go ahead, sir.
Jay Ash Kingston. So I just want to clarify, because I heard the city data, Exeter, how much can buy a house for? Two or something.
You can, you can put both the question.
No, I just want to clarify, because I'll take three at that price. Realtor.com right now says the median housing price in Exeter is three twenty-five. So I just want to clarify that.
All right, good, thank you. This lady right here, come on up, come right up, please. If you can give us her name, that would be really helpful.
My name is Sandra Heda, I'm Kingston, New Hampshire, and I'm going to speak from my heart. There are villains up here. Every one of these people, school board, school budget committee, are committed to the district and give their time and work hard. Teachers should be paid. Teachers should not be without a contract. And everybody up there agrees. And that should be the priority, the teachers. And that's everybody's priority up there. You also have to think about the burden on taxpayers. And the taxpayers in every district in New Hampshire are having a tough time. It isn't just here. It isn't just here. I spent fifty-six years in Placid. I've spent the last twelve years in Kingston. And what happens is, not everybody that votes is here. And the older burden taxpayers who are struggling are going to go to the polls on March fourteenth and possibly punish the teachers again, or possibly not pass the warrant article that will make Swayze Gymnasium, which I went to school with, I spent three years in the old building, and then they made it so it didn't leave. So I'm familiar with the town, and I'm familiar with Swayze Gymnasium, and it would be a shame if that warrant article doesn't get passed. It would be a shame if the teacher's contract, contract article doesn't get passed. And so, to balance, to balance those issues and the money, the budget committee proposed a budget that was lower, and they looked real hard at ways that we could reduce spending. So I just, I just think everybody should settle down and think. Think about everybody, you know? The teachers, the children, everybody, and the money that's on the table. And, um, and it's sad. It's sad that people get angry, it's sad that people say things to each other, I don't do social media, I don't do Facebook, I don't do Twitter, I wish our kids did, I don't text, or anything like that. And so, God bless Kingston, I'm New.
To the amendment, or the warrant article itself, then let's hear it, not then the government. Uh, I think it'll pretty soon, it's obvious that they're doing it. Go ahead, sir.
I'm the best. For clarification, operating budget is one thing, right out of Article Three. The professional staff agreement is the union agreement, that's out of Article Four, so one is usually exclusive from the other.
In that case, and just so everybody's clear on that, I've been on a lot of leeway here, and normally I don't let people talk about future articles, because we're dealing with one piece or other, but it's kind of been wrapped in a bit somehow, and so I've been, okay, well, let's talk about that a little bit. When we come time to, to those two contracts, to negotiated contracts, they're not subject to amendment legally, so it's going to be, probably, I'm going to be reading the article, people will discuss it, find, it's going to be posted on ballot the way it appears. So, so if you have some comment that you want to make about it, go ahead and.
No, my, my question was, there was a lot of talk about Article Four in relation to Article Three, but they don't have any.
No, sir.
Okay. And if we don't accept Article Three with or without the amendment, then it's more money, right? Thirty-four million dollars, thirty-four point seven million would be the default budget?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that four yet, it's not my, my role yet. Uh, but what I can tell you is this, we're going to be voting on the, we're going to be voting on the amendment, and then the article will be on ballot as amended, or not amended, there. Anything else that needs to be said? If not, we'll proceed. Oh, yeah, oh, here, and then we'll probably take a vote. Take a vote here.
Joel Moner from Kingston. I guess not a whole lot new to say, other than I do support the amendment. I do support the amendment, that is on the floor. Somehow, the default budget, which was, which is on the ballot as well, and the superintendent's proposed budget was below that, somehow the default budget in our community seems to be viewed as a bulked-up, a loaded budget. But what the, I hope people realize is that the default budget, which we are well under with this amendment, is actually just a budget for the current year, plus any cost increases that have been negotiated, or bond payments and part of that. So I just want to make sure people are clear that the default budget is actually a very sparring budget for the district, and that's why we're already positions eliminated, just to keep that underneath the default budget.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion, move the question. Okay, second, okay. Okay, this time, most of the main to do the question, this gentleman right here. Okay, so if you want to cut off the debate, we're going to vote on the amendment at this time as an amendment, and you can explain it before you vote on cutting off the debate. If you want to vote on the amendment, you're going to vote yes, if you want to talk some way, you'll vote no. And then I'll explain the amendment again before we vote on that, so make sure everyone's clear on the voting. All of them in favor of cutting off the debate at this time, voting on the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But those opposed? Okay. I'm glad you can read something white, that's a good idea. All right. So, there's been a motion made, a second, to increase the stated budget amount of five-hundred-thousand, five-hundred dollars, and that is what we're going to be voting on. So if you're going to be in favor of that increase, you'll be voting yes, if you're opposed, you'll be voting no.
What's last line?
Okay, we're going to use K, and what's going to happen here, just vote anyway that you can get. Uh, we're going to put this in ballot box, I'd like one of the police officers down here, we'll keep an eye on it if we would. We have, and what I have here, I have a lock on one, I have a lock on the other, we have a police officer right standing beside it, I'm going to try to get it, many people voting. Oh, man. So what I'm going to do is, can we get like some pencils and, and maybe, I'd like some people to actually sign with their ballot? Okay, so what we're going to do is have folks come down, you're going to come downstairs, and then we'll re, 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 get going again here, and then maybe tie it up on the next side. Check the ballot box, vote for his, publicly, the officer there, okay? They're good? Okay, yeah, ballot box are good? And so we're going to go ahead and start voting, if you're in favor, you will vote yes, and K, K is a test, okay? Please come over. I guess you've all just seen in Kingston how we conduct a Chinese flag roll. It's hard, we won't do that again, though, somebody come down with one eye and they vote the other, but that was just terrible. Anyway, uh, the vote in, and the vote is, uh, as follows. The yes in favor of the amendment is two-hundred-and-fifty-eight, the no is one-hundred-and-eighty-three, and I declare a call. That might doesn't like you.
I'd like to make a motion to restrict consideration.
Reconsideration. Okay, is there a second to that? Okay. Reconsideration of the article in terms of amendment, okay? Okay, motion to make is restrict reconsideration of the article with amendment. All those that are in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it in that motion. Moving forward, moving forward, uh, the next article, Article Three. I'm sorry, Article Four, professional staff agreement. Shallow Sandmore Regional Education Group, the cost items included in the collective bargaining, professional staff reached between the school board and the Sandmore Regional Education Association, which calls for a fall increase in salary and benefits at current staffing levels where they are unpaid in prior fiscal year, year one, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, zero, year two, seven, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, five-hundred-two-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-two dollars, year three, two hundred, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-ninety-four dollars, and further to raise and appropriate the sum of five-hundred-two-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-two dollars for the year two thousand seventeen, eighteen fiscal year, plus some representative additional cost attributable to the increase in salary and benefits of the level of incorporation to current staffing level by the motion. Second, second, uh, Ms. Ben, I have to recognize that it's the. Point of order, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that I correct. I thought that was on the amendment, increase in five-hundred-some-what-thousand, but did we vote or not, was that all?
Did? No, the, the article, because it cannot be reconsidered, the article appear as amended on the ballot on March fourteenth.
As amended.
As amended.
So we don't, we don't need two votes?
No, you do not. You wouldn't vote on that tonight, well. Would you benefit?
Our teachers are our treasure, to be guarded and secured. Equally treasured are our community's children. Our teachers meet our children every day as dedicated professionals whose goal is to open doors through which students' hopes and passions and excitements can flow. They need the happy and the fearful, tired, exhausted, hungry and fed, bold and tempted, some students who are facing challenges that would flatten most of us. Those students are more than calculations or data points on a spreadsheet. The teachers meet the students with empathy and caring, with many tools to pokes all orders towards keeping their eyes on the prize of a meaningful and fulfilling life,
I'm Janet Bennett, I'm an eighteen-year veteran of the school board, I've been chair three times, and I was on the negotiating team. This slide is the staff, the, the committee members on the, on the negotiating team, the SRAA, and from the district's school board. I would like to thank my colleagues on the school board, the negotiating team, and the members of the SRAA negotiating team for many hours of thoughtful and productive dialogue. Please note the logo at the top of the slide. In my opinion, it expresses the very foundational thoughts that informed our discussions, and in fact, the very reason we are all here today. The second bullet on this slide is important, because not only did we review the contract in use, which was a two-year-old contract, but also the contract negotiated last year that did not pass, and so we had a efficiency board. We were able to refer to and build upon the accomplishments of last year's negotiation teams. We made the two-year contract decision rather than the three in direct response to the Affordable Care Act and the rules. There was a possibility that the unknowns could have had a significant financial impact on the district for the potential third year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. The SRAA negotiated a change in healthcare coverage, saving the district a hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-two This slide is information about that. The all-important tax impact, and the figures associated with your property. We also made comparisons, because we know that we, because of the years of contracts not passing, we know that we have issues with being competitive because of those years that the state is going to move forward. So there's just some more information, and all of this will be loaded up on the website for you to see. The benefits have been discussed a lot tonight, and we believe these, and I thank you for
Questions, um, made on the teacher's side, and the articles that were part of discussion today. And I'm told by school council, because it is a negotiated contract, both this one and the next article, it cannot be amended, so, uh, but if you have a question, it's certainly fair, fair questions.
Hi, I'm Laura Frey, I'm in. I just have a couple of questions. The first one is just for people's information and reminding, because I'm not sure, are there still step raises for teaching staff? And could someone, if there are, could that be explained for the benefit of people that are here? And my other question is about the multi-year contract, which had a little snap move a few years ago, the multi-year contract, and I haven't seen anything specific about the second. And, um, I haven't seen anything specific about the second year's, uh, tax impact. And no one's mentioned anything about encumbering fines from the following year, which is not this year's budget. So, right, and I'd like to know what the percentage increase, what the pay increase percentage is for those two years.
Thank you very much for your question. Answer your first question first, if that makes sense. There is a two-point-two-plus step in the first year and two, uh, two percent step in the second year. Was the step, consider it as staff members in the school, in schools, there are many different, uh, so I'm sorry, my language. There's staff members that are classified as getting a bachelor's degree, masters, bachelors plus fifteen, bachelors plus thirty. So as teachers come into the school system, they're at a level. And then as they go through each year, they get additional levels. Someone else more better than I, a guy that can probably explain this, but the point being is, as a staff member enters into the school system, our staff have gone many years without a step increase, which means that they're not getting a raise, and they're also not going up that ladder. Unless you're going to, I can't wait. So then furthermore, I know, um, so we took into consideration this year that there was no step increase recently. And we took that understanding that also we're trying to guess comparable to other districts in other, in the wrong state. We can share with you more comparative data on the, on the, and there's no slide here showing it, but the point being here is we're behind step schedule because we, the professional staff, have gone five, uh, ten years without a contract, they have without a step increase. So we front-loaded two-point-two percent in the first year to go ahead and help offset a little bit of that. Yes, Mr. Doggy? Thank you, Mr. Doggy, I appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Doggy, I'm very excited for your questions.
We have always done a step increase as long as we've had a contract. I've been on the school board and with the school district for thirty years, and we have never thought, had a step increase plus percentage in the contract. So that was an error. There were four years that we didn't have a contract, not five. And the average step increase is between three-point-two and three-point-six percent. So the average employee will receive this year is a increase of five-point-five to five-point-eight percent. For the first year, and in the second year, they will receive a five-point-two, two-point-five, five-point-six percent increase.
Further, Mr. Bates.
Um, the next one, I just wanted to reiterate. A year ago, I went to the school board meeting when it did not pass. And I blasted the school board that they didn't do enough, that they didn't campaign. Tonight, we found a common ground with the budget committee and the school board for the teacher's contract. It's not the responsibility of the teachers to sit out there with a sign and beg for a raise. It's the responsibility of the school board and that budget committee to go out and campaign and help these teachers get a contract that they deserve. On top of that, we have a little school district up in Bedford that's called Junior Sanborn. There's over fifteen teachers that have left our district to go there, pay and environment. We need to change the environment, which I think we're on the right track tonight. And number two, we need to pay our teachers.
My name is Evan Stojrowski, I am president of the Sanborn Regional Education Association. I represent both teachers of the district and the professional staff in the district and the support staff. Um, I stood up here because Janet asked me to come up as the chief negotiator of the contract. I thought I could answer any questions, um, but I guess my comments will be made from the floor instead. I am, I'm not resident of the town, but as chief negotiator of the contract, I...
Let's let him speak.
Alright, did no objection, we're gonna let you speak, you're chief negotiator. Knowing that you're not a resident, that's fine, go ahead, say what you have to say.
Thank you. Um, the contract that we have negotiated, I think, is a fair deal. Um, when we negotiate and the teams sit next to each other, we take into consideration the needs of the town, knowing that the contract then goes to a full-town vote. We can't ask for the sky, we have to ask for something that will be reasonable. We're very pleased that the budget committee and the school board both support the contract this year, which will appear on the warrant article as such. I won't repeat some of the great things that have been said tonight about all the wonderful things happening in the district, all the recognitions we've received. But it is important to know that last year, forty staff members left the district. Twenty-seven of them were professional staff members, thirteen were support staff members. I think there's a direct correlation to the non-passage of the contract. In years where contracts have failed, more staff members have left. I think what we're talking about here in a school district that's important is consistency. We're not a perfect school district. We're a great school district, but we're by no means perfect. I think things like discipline have come up, things like rating systems have come up, some unease in the community about those things, but we're working on them. And the way that you work on them to get better is to be more consistent and to keep your staff here working on those things. The contracts will help to that end. Some of the other things that I had planned to say, I've already been said, so I won't repeat, but I will say this. They say it takes a village to raise a student. Look around, this is your community. And I think as someone who's been teaching in this community for the past ten years, I see former students here, I see parents who have developed relationships with over the years, through drama program or through classes, and I think that in some way, I feel part of that community. And so, when you look at raising a child, when you look at all the great things the teachers do, I see my role negotiating the contract as president of the union, as chief negotiator of the contract. My most important role is as a teacher, is with the relationships that I've made with my students. And seeing them come back and knowing that they're doing well in their lives is important. Supporting the contract will help maintain consistency within the district and help maintain those relationships with students, and I think it will make us a stronger, better school district. Please go ahead.
Okay, something new, go ahead and say it.
Um, Michael, I've had some fantastic teachers since I was first rated in more at school. And I just want to reinforce to everyone that I wouldn't be able to be where I am today, and some of those teachers up here tonight, I've seen my first grade teacher up there tonight, uh, which is actually fantastic to see, and also very strange to look at. But I just want to reinforce to the talents that without those people directly impacting my life and directly impacting the life of your kids, and some of the kids that have been inspired to be here today by those teachers, we wouldn't be where we are. Um, so I'd also like to really reinforce the idea that you guys will have, oh yes, a teacher contract. Thank you.
I, I would like to, um, in response to a former speaker, the actual percentage is four-point-five for the first year and four-point-two for the second.
Thank you. I recommend that once again, other people want to speak, I'll come back to you. Somebody else have their hand up here? No, okay, go ahead.
The numbers that we just quoted are mean average. They are, they do not represent people on the matrix. That is, if you take the people that are off the matrix, and they're receiving the less of a, of a pay raise, than the people that are on the matrix, but somebody questioned what the steps were on the matrix. It was incorrect information was given, I corrected.
Can you look further on this? Mr. Martin, moving on, please. There's nothing, there's nothing really a rule, you can just look up what appeared on the community ballot and it's there. So if there's no further discussion, the article number four will appear on the ballot as printed. Moving into article five. Shallow Sanborn, uh, it's Shelly Sanborn, our regional school district, Article Four defeated authorized the governing body on one special meeting at its auction, progress article for cost items only. Any sec. Move the motion. Who should speak your motion?
The special meeting of the special staff, as, as the state's, um, in the smarter indicated, in the event that Article Four is defeated, which is, the Sanborn Regional School District is able to go ahead and operate a governing body, us to go ahead and have a special meeting to potentially go ahead and have another one-day vote on this. And that vote will be, and that will be open to you, the public, opens the community. So in the event that this does not pass, we can potentially put, call a meeting and call a vote in the community one more time, which is new to us, this is the first time we've done this. And this will be, this will be at the court's court. So again, just in the event this doesn't pass, there's further discussion opened up and then read, bring this to you. Um, this is the exact same thing in Article Seven, which we...
Uh, Jim Baker. I'm curious if it goes to another vote. Is it a majority vote or is it two-thirds vote?
Go ahead.
Sir Baker's asking, is it a majority or a supermajority? Uh, this evening we had a majority vote. A supermajority would be a two-thirds, this is a majority vote, Mr. Baker.
Wait, the second coming of this would be a majority vote?
Yes.
Yes. That's what the... Any further... Further discussion on the article? If not, it will appear on the ballot as printed. Article Six, Support Staff Agreement, Shallow Sanborn Regional School District approved the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement for support staff reached between the school board and the Sanborn Regional Education Association, which calls for a fall rate increase in salary and benefits at current staffing levels where they are unpaid in prior fiscal year, year one, two thousand seventeen eighteen, seventy-one thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars. Year two, two thousand eighteen nineteen, seventy-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-one thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars for the two thousand seventeen eighteen fiscal year, such some representing additional costs attributed to the increase in salary and benefits of those with the appropriation at the current staffing levels, we have a motion here. Uh, second.
I'd like to ask Ms. Karen Ladd to come forward. Mr. Ladd, stand by for me. Again, let me make a presentation, I think... Thank you very much, and thank you very much for sticking around. I would just like to ask, I know it's very late, and I understand that these, this event obviously isn't long, but if at all possible, stick around, because we have, uh, four more articles. Alright, um, just like prior, our number five, um, the, the support, we have, I'm very proud to be part of the negotiating team for the support staff. Uh, myself and my esteemed colleagues are also part of the professional staff. This year, same, but we had a different, obviously, negotiating team for the support staff. And I'd like to thank those of all, to all of this, Karen. Again, like the professional support staff, the, the professional contract, the support staff is a two-year. We thought it was sensible based upon many things that might be coming down the pipe with catalog, catalog tax and other variables. So we mirrored the two, which is unheard of, to be brutally honest with you. You typically offset these, but because we didn't pass a professional contract last year, we thought it was in the best interest of doing both a two-year cycle. And because of that, we really negotiated the support staff, the professional staff, and the attainable budget number that we brought forth there. So, and what happened here is we had salary and compensation changes. In year one, there's a single step and one-point-seven-five percent increase. And off the matrix, as Mr. Doggy earlier, when we pay your level and plateau, it's a three percent increase. And that's the exact same thing year two as well. That's the salary side of things. Why is this feasible and why are we very appreciative of what the support staff are doing and what they helped me negotiate on? Is because they continue to use a high deductible for health insurance plan for all their support staff members. Furthermore, the compensation for attendance and staff meetings was also negotiated. So we restructured a lot of language, they came forth with some comprehensive ideas of actually getting support staff involved. And I want to just pause there for a second, the support staff want to be involved and empower the culture and the growth of it, because they see the great things that are happening. So they should be compensated, we should expect and want them to be here. So the school board, um, negotiating, negotiating team along with the support staff negotiating team found a really good common ground here, growing potentially first of all. Doing so, we reduced course reimbursement, interestingly enough, so we gave, they gave, we, and we get, took and gave back and forth. Um, in the end, it's actually cost savings here. Furthermore, um, sorry, I'm here, I'm sure it's happening. Uh, so what does this look like? In year one, the salary increase for the support staff is sixty, fifty-nine thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. Um, a benefit package increase of eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, which is a total increase, as you can see, is seventy-one thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars. And in year two, again, it's seventy-five thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars. That's all support staff. That's sixty, maybe members or so? Okay, what is the estimated tax impact to our communities? It's actually six cents per one thousand dollars for both Kingston and Newland on year one. In year two, Kingston's six, six cents per thousand, and Newland's seven cents per one thousand dollars. Take a look at the metrics behind the scenes. Uh, in Kingston, a household value of two hundred thousand dollars, that'd be eleven dollars a year. England, and Newland, it'd be estimated about fourteen dollars. At the high end, three hundred thousand dollar, um, residency, eighteen dollars, and, and Newland, twenty dollars. I thank you very much for listening, I appreciate it, and thank you again for the negotiating team.
Questions or further questions on this article? If not, it can appear as printed on the ballot. Okay, moving into, uh, Article Seven, Shallow Sanborn Regional School District, Article Six defeated authorized the governing body on one special meeting at its auction, progress Article Six cost items only, do I have a motion here? Second, discussion on Article Seven? If not, it'll appear on the ballot as printed. Article Number Eight. Enter into conversation with the town of Kingston to sell some or borrowing on high school books, high school campus. Shelly Sandberg, regional school district entered into conversations about and potential negotiation with the town of Kingston for the sale of some or a full high school campus parcel located in 178 Main Street. Go ahead, a motion. Okay, second. Mr. Ryder, do you wish to speak?
At this, at this time, I would like you to recognize Mrs. Powers, who was the chairman of the Heritage Committee for the town of Kingston, she is very, very knowledgeable in this and has really shepherded this all the way through the time. Well, if this annoyed you, mind if Deb, I do, would you...
Okay, go ahead, Deb, if you want, and then, uh, if you can also, just a little bit about that, that'd be great, I'm sure we can align.
Uh, yes, I'm going to be reprieved tonight, Debbie Powers, Heritage Commission, and I'm also on the Envision Kingston Two Subcommittee. What has happened over the past few years is that the Sanborn Seminary has been seeking a repurpose. We have spent the last ten years, three ad hoc committees, and haven't come to a mutual agreeable solution for both Kingston and Newton. In the past, past June, June, June of 2016, we worked with a Planned and Handheld Organization and had a charrette in Kingston, fully supporting, um, with the school board and a lot of the people on the, um, school, um, staff. The results of this, which over 200 people participated in, from Newton and Kingston, mostly from Kingston, of course, it was in Kingston, was that the Sanborn Seminary is an iconic building, it's on the national register, it's a beautiful building that needs to be preserved. Why we are asking on this ballot for the Kingston and Newton voters to allow us to negotiate is before we begin a lot of work, for a lot of volunteers to negotiate this for the school board, we want to know that the people have the appetite to do so. So we are asking you to support this, it does, it's a non-binding, non-money vote, we just want to get a bit of understanding on how people are looking at, um, this building. There is no immediate need that we have found for the school to have this building and additionally the school board and all of its staff need to concentrate on education. Currently, in Kingston, we have a group of people that come from the planning board, from all the heritage and historic districts, we have people from the budget committee and other volunteers who are willing to put the time in to negotiate, first of all, with the board. If we come to a conclusion, we'll bring it back to the vote, we'll advertise a campaign and let you have a more of an idea of what we can do with this property, but we have, at this time, we have the volunteers to do so. So we would appreciate it if you would vote in favor of these negotiations, again, non-binding, non-monetary, and also something that the school board does not need to be involved in, as in, in a recent property that they have currently no future use for, and should not be as mandatory for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noish?
Art Noish, Kingston, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a question for the school board, as this article comes from the school board. Was it the board's intent to restrict these conversations and negotiations to only the town of Kingston? Or did the board contemplate opening any potential conversations and negotiations to any other interested and qualified article?
Thank you, Rob. It's, 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 if you could state your question, somebody wants to answer it, they will, they won't. If you can't, you know, if you made a question, if anything else I want to say?
Depending on the answer to the question, I would be, um, I would make an amendment if the answer is in one way.
Anyway, Mr. Ryder, this is strictly, can we, can we talk to them if they want to talk to us? There is also a warrant out for the town of Kingston, because Kingston has to decide whether they want the town of Kingston to talk to the school board, and new people in the school district have to decide whether they want the town, whether they want the school to talk to the town of Kingston. Everything's on the table, all right? We don't know, this is strictly negotiations, this is strictly talking, right? Once something has come to fruition, or you've got an idea, and we've settled on whatever we set upon, we will then bring it to you, and you will say yes or no. So right now, it's strictly talking, we don't know where we're going, but we have to start somewhere. Two years ago, the seminary building alone, there was a warrant, I think, two years ago, and three, the warrant out, I think, was two million dollars to, to, to bring it up to usable condition. Well, the building is just sitting here, it's on the national register, it's a beautiful piece of property, and we continue letting it go and going up. So there was a charrette, and then there was Envision Kingston, and one of the recommendations from the Envision Kingston was, maybe the town should talk to the school board about an AB taking that over. So we're saying to you, can we talk to you, so maybe we take it over? How much, what, I don't know, and I don't want to get into, well, it could be for money, it could be land costs, but we don't know. Will you let us talk? Once we come up with something, we'll let you know, and then you can decide whether you want us to do that.
Okay, anything further?
Now, as far as I know, it's just the town in Kingston, I don't think there's any other private organization involved. The school board, they say, well, they want private people, you can make more money, I don't know. But I think you get the gist of what they're trying to do here, even though nobody knows where they're going with that. Any other comment on this article? If not, it'll appear on the ballot.
Article Number Nine. ADA, ADA Improvement to the Jim and Chase Field House, submitted by petition. Shelly Sandberg, regional school district raised incorporated sum of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars under the special warrant article for the purpose to plead ADA compliance, capital improvements of the Swayze, Jim and Chase Field House has recommended adopted by the school board in the 2018 year of the five-year capital improvement program, 2018 and 2022. Do I have a motion? If you're a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you wish to speak to the article? You made a motion, you want, you don't have to, but you kind of like, I always recognize the question that makes the motion first, and the question.
I'd like to say that, um, I think this is extremely important that this get passed. We have kids who participate in many, many sports in the district, and we know well in Kingston. There's a lot else for kids to do, so it's really important to have this, they have basketball, they have our, uh, high school, uh, football takes place there, there's cheerleading, the, the middle school basketball games are played there, this is just a very important article to be passed by the voters, and the tax impact is not great for the return.
Any discussion or questions further on this article? If not, it'll appear on the ballot as printed. Okay, moving right along here, Article Ten, for the school window and blind replacements, submitted by petition, Shelly Sandberg, regional school district raised incorporated sum of one hundred and two hundred and thirty dollars under the special warrant article for the purpose to plead window and blind replacement improvements of the middle school has recommended adopted by the school board in the 2018 year of the five-year capital improvement program, 2018 and 2022. Do I have a motion here? Okay, second. Okay, discussion? If you would like to speak to that?
This is, uh, this is a motion, this is a warrant article to replace middle school windows, this has been brought forward a couple of years. In the past, it was brought forward as an energy saving warrant, which would have a twenty-five to twenty-seven year payback in energy savings. This year, it was originally proposed as a life safety issue, and with the statement that, uh, the fire department and police departments in Newton had agreed that this was a real life safety issue, that turns out not to be the case. It is a energy savings warrant. My personal feeling is that we need to make a bigger plan for the middle school and for the future, and throwing money at it without a bigger plan makes no sense at this point. I think that we need to make a plan for the next twenty to twenty-five years for substantial issues with middle school, with narrow hallways, small classrooms, uh, no labs, uh, a small sized cafeteria, warming kitchen, half-sized gym. There are some issues that need to be addressed with a bigger plan and with a bond issue for the future, so I think it's time to defer this. It was part of the capital improvement plan that was adopted by the school board, uh, however, I think that they need to make a plan that's a little bit bigger scope than planning to spend ninety-one-six million dollars over the next five years on these things, but this is a part of that plan.
Further discussion? Mr. Baker?
General Manager, um, the capital improvements, this is just a small little piece of that iceberg. Next year, they've got, I think it's four million dollars plus. A big part of that is slated for the middle school. As Ms. Collier said, we need a plan, we have a, right now, the capital improvements plan, quote unquote, passed by the school board is really an expense list. There's no plan in law. To spend almost ten million dollars in five years with no funding is not a plan. What they typically do is at the end of the year, they spend leftover money for this, to the extent that they can, and then they kick the project down the road to the next year. We need a real plan, that school is becoming obsolete, there's no point just, just looking at it and putting four million dollars into what are close to that.
Point of order?
Right. Go, go ahead, okay, I see, that's right, we're talking about the future here too. That's funny. Now, this article was requested to be by secret ballot, so we do have to do a secret ballot on this article. Although frankly, we're, we're not, I'm going to recognize, it was, I'm sorry, if there's some change to this, we have to do a secret ballot, if not, then it'll appear on the ballot as printed, so I just want to let you know that, there was an article, additional article that had that, that change. Go ahead, Mr. Ryder, who, who wants to speak? Mr. Ryder, do you want to speak? And Shelly, and, and she wants to go, so go ahead.
Collecting a new, where any one of the several articles we've just passed would have fully confronted any prior station. We have heard tonight about how precious our children are, how wonderful our teachers are, however, we are looking at windows and curtains in a building that, quite honestly, at the rate things going, with the cloud of irony, might not get pulled out. We have spent an awful lot of money this evening on various articles, and luckily, the budget committee will be meeting again to review its recommendations, because I've reached the point where, from what my board selection has told me, from what residents in my town have, what people that have written arrears on their taxes have told me, we have gone to the well once too often, and we know there are going to be people out there that are going to be pushing everything on this ballot, has to go through. Well, guess what, there needs to be that. Just like I showed there are things in Kingston that need to be done, quite honestly, these windows are not the ones that was originally brought up, it was originally brought up as an energy saving issue. For some reason, when the warrant out was put forward this year, was put forward to be on life safety, we were told that my board, our people, fire chief, had basically threatened all of the condemned buildings because of these windows. It was a lie, a pure and simple lie.
All right, just getting, do you want to speak? Let me stand.
You stand up to speak to the article?
I don't think that's quite on or something, it's not, it's not confusing, go ahead.
It's going...
Be quiet in this.
The windows in this part of the middle school are thirty-nine years old. To replace these windows would indeed give cost savings, but there is a life safety issue as well, because these windows are constructed, they're not double honed windows. They crank outward, some of which, many of them do not even work anymore, so you can't crank them out at all, there's a bar in the middle. So were there, um, an issue where that building needed to be, that part of the building needed to be evacuated, it would be very, very risky to think that people could get out, children and staff. This has been deferred, it has been deferred. The school board, I believe in good faith, looked at all the things in the capital improvement plan, and understanding that it would be a burden on the taxpayers to put everything forth, they chose two articles. One was the Americans with Disabilities Act of compliance for Swayze and Chase Field, because if that is not passed, then those facilities will be closed, and the second one that they chose to put on was this one. I think this has been deferred too long, and for the safety of the children in that building every day, and the staff in that building, these thirty-nine year old windows need to be replaced.
Okay, do you have questions or state? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dennis. As a thirty-year construction professional, what you're talking about is a means of progress, and they either are or are not, and my daughter goes to this, so I, I, whether or not it's a life safety issue, it's not, they're fine. A twenty to twenty-five year, um, payback is not a reason to do an energy project for public funding, and if you don't, if you have a legit problem with the building, where the buildings are big enough, and the facility isn't appropriate, it's outdated, it's thirty-nine years old, then throw in a hundred and fifty grand at it for windows and blinds, isn't really appropriate. Come back to the town with a comprehensive, be it four million dollars, be it ten million dollars, package that says, this is what we need to do to make this building and or a different building appropriate, it's planned out, it's scheduled out, but don't abandon it now. May it. That's it.
Uh, if there's, if there's nothing further on the article, it'll appear as printed on the ballot.
Mr. Ryder?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you want to say something? Go ahead.
I would just like to, Bart, it's the capital improvement, improvement project plan that was prepared by the, um, school district, it was prepared by, um, Maryne's Architects. It is on the website as well, for people to look at. Reading from the methodology, methodology page, it says, "We prioritize items based on the following criteria. Number one, work required to bring the school into control under the building code, fire code, or the ADA act. Work that would increase the health, safety, or security of the students and staff." And then if you go to page thirteen, where it talks about the windows, it says, "Windows in area A and B, except two science rooms, are original to nineteen-seventy-eight, not energy efficient and do not provide the required opening size to comply with fire codes. Replace the really heavy-duty commercial and minimal windows, replace insulated panels below windows with new insulated panels." So we do have a plan, we have this document, and this is the priority right now, um, that we can address given the other, um, important issues based on school district, so that's the rationale behind that one. Thank you.
If there's nothing further, just, one more, okay, one more, I can go to the floor midline.
On the December seventh meeting, and then also on the December fourteenth session we had, and then December twenty-first session... had, and then December twenty-first session we had, so we had three laborious conversations about life safety, it's extremely challenging. Me, as a student in the grace, back in the day, getting there now, I was a heavy little kid. This heavy little kid would not have made it out of windows in the event that that roof collapsed, and that building could have collapsed two years ago. Let's all take a step back here. Two years ago, that building had trust issues. The building was closed for a long time. In the event that something tragic had happened, and the point of egress would have been those windows, some of those windows do not open up. Your child would not have been able to get out. I would not have been able to get out. Let's be sensible here. Life safety or not, these are children's, children, these are adults that you go in those buildings. I see a few of us here that would not fit through those windows. Let's be smart and sensible, although we're thinking about here.
Yes, somebody has something else new to add, or go along with it, and Mr. Dyer could do something too.
Very simple. When the building was built, and even today, the windows in those rooms are not means of egress. Quite honestly, I doubt most of us perhaps did climb over the window sill. They were never intended to be a means of egress. They are not a means of egress. The only reason that they're trying to put that out is scare tap. I have been on this one for many years, and this year, this is the one that I want to call BS on.
Mr. Baker. Any further line of this article?
There is one, it appears, is printed on the ballot, displays some hockey. San Antonio High School hockey team submitted by petition by high school, they said, "The high school hockey team board, the regional board, Kingston, New Shell, San Antonio, is appropriated to fund nineteen and twelve. To partly become the high school hockey team. These funds will be used to cover away games, provide coaching staff funding, and official fees, and athletic use/fees. Hockey team is out of its season, third playing varsity offseason. Thus far, we have funded solely to the hockey boosters club fundraising. We, as citizens, feel that the expenses are largely funded through the school district school budget, just the same as all others." This article provides funding for varsity ice hockey, the initial fourteen thousand, funding a hundred percent of ice hockey. Boosters club, do I have a motion here?
Make the motion, what's your name?
John Mulligan.
Okay, second? Okay, you wish to speak your motion?
I actually make a motion to amend the article. Don't worry about it.
You would amend it? I take the air. Your amendment is to raise an appropriate, and I'll give this to the clerk of justice, raise what is it, twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars to fund the high school hockey team with ninety-eight hundred to raise by taxation, fourteen thousand dollars to come from funds, what you're saying, the high school hockey boosters club. So, so what you're saying, if you're adding that the whole amount in, but you're saying fourteen of this is going to come from, still come from the boosters, ninety-eight hundred is going to come from the taxpayers?
Correct. There's no change in the amount of money from the taxpayers, but for, because of the way of funding, the total funding needs to be listed on the article.
Okay. Any, anything else that you wish to say about the article?
Just a little, I'm glad for, I'm just, we're still left in here. So San Antonio High School program started five years ago, SAVV program. The boosters have self-funded this program for the last five years. For the past three years, after being asked by athletic director, we would consider going to varsity program. The boosters have raised about twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-three thousand dollars per year. So our expenses increased significantly when we went to varsity. But it's for a program that twenty athletes average per year, kind of anticipating it, both males and females, from all three communities that feed in high school, and just looking for some, some support for the community, for the global expenses that other athletic programs can handle.
Okay. Is there any other question on the amendment? If not, I don't know, the last question is here. Okay. Mr. Mason, go ahead, and then Mr. Dyer.
I'd like to make a clarification on the amendment. Does the amendment remove this as being, as part of the general plan moving forward and so forth?
The intent is that this is a one-year article, so just funny, if the next year, I thought I'd like the school board and budget committee to consider adding it in, at that discretion, but if that doesn't occur, then we would go back to the others' pastor, the similar around next year.
And I agree, the amendment, yes, if you'd like to do that, so you clear. Do you want to say something?
I'm good.
Go ahead, Mr. Dyer.
Here's with the amendment that we are comparing the San Antonio High School hockey boosters club to a commitment, commitment of fourteen thousand dollars. However, we can, if this group does not have fourteen thousand dollars, how are they going to pay it? Because we would not be able to spend more than the ninety-eight hundred. I just, I'm not certain that this is legally through.
Well, let me reiterate, I'm, if I finish on behalf of the San Antonio High School hockey team board, registered voters, Kingston, New Shell, San Antonio, school district raised appropriated the sum of twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars to fund the high school hockey team with ninety-eight hundred dollars to be raised by taxation, and fourteen thousand dollars to come from fundraising by the San Antonio High School hockey boosters club. These funds will be used to cover a game transportation by the coaching staff, game official fees and athletic use/fees, the hockey team announced a year, third playing varsity offseason. Thus far, we have funded solely to the hockey boosters club fundraising. For instance, this article provides funding for varsity ice hockey with additional fourteen thousand dollars coming from, coming, funding to come from the San Antonio High School hockey boosters club. That is the amendment. And what we would do is, I would do a voice vote on the amendment, and then the carries up the paper that way. Any other questions on this amendment? If not, all those in favor of the amendment, super class, say aye.
Aye.
Or if you both say no.
No.
Behind subject, and that carries, anything else on the article? If not, the peer is amended on the ballot on the fourteenth. Article twelve, capital improvement, Swayze Gym and Chase Field submitted by petition to San Antonio Regional School District, raising the aggregate sum of five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand for the purpose of capital improvements recommended by the school board in two thousand eighteen year of the five-year capital improvement program, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, to the Swayze Gym. And further, raise appropriated the, and Chase Fields accept for the ADA compliance contained in a separate law article. We have a motion on article twelve. It is very slow. Okay, why you wish to speak? Do you wish, I do wish to speak your, yes?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend the amendment. I'd like to amend the amount from five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars to one dollar.
Okay. Motion to be amended, second that. Okay, speak your motion, Mr. Dyer.
Unfortunately, this and the following amendment, and actually, couple of previous ones, were not, they, they were, these are amendments that, they were, excuse me, these are articles by petition that were based off of earlier versions of what the administration had put together. And the way that these things, these amendments are worded is such that if they were not to pass, it could have some pretty dire consequences. So what we're at, what I'm asking, is that we recognize that the most important thing is that the previous, and then the previous articles did pass, that the, the teacher's contract, the budget, the professional staff, support staff, et cetera, and the ADN, and that we don't overload, and I think that is part of the intent, quite frankly, of the petitioners, some of these articles, and by making it one dollar, it gives the administrations some flexibility that they wouldn't have if it was simply one of that.
Further discussion on the article, Mr. Baker?
By making it one dollar, that sounds like a pretty good deal, if you don't want to fund this. But the reality is, again, this is part of that capital improvement is expenseless, with no, no money out there to fund these programs. By making it one dollar, it means that at the end of the year, there's money that should go back to the taxpayers. The school administration would decide to spend that money, as much of it as they have left over, on this project. The way to deal with this is to zero, make an amendment that has zero amendments. So don't pass this amendment unless you want money that should come back to the taxpayers at the end of the year to get spent on this project. Thank you.
And also, just to let you know, this is a secret ballot, and amendments are held by the secret ballot, and the secret request of petition. It's sure. No? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So, I think, I'd like to see, there could be a clarification on what Barry's speech used, so people understand what it is, but correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if it's zeroed out here today, the, if it's done to zero, or if the voters rejected, then that ties that hand with the previous article, so that only that exact amount can be spent on the Chase and Swayze Gym improvements. Therefore, we're basically telling a, or telling the school district that you have to find a contractor who is only going to spend exactly this amount on it. So if they start tearing things apart, and start getting, everybody, there's not many kids starting to work, you start pulling things apart, you may find problems, you have to have some sort of a contingency built in, and the ability to go back to the client, and, and have the ability to put in change orders, and, and find, maybe you find a ton of mold behind a wall, or you might find some other things that need to be made for safety improvements, but once you start tearing that apart, you need the flexibility. So if I'm correct, I think if we, and I think, again, this is the intention of putting these petition articles on, if we have two, these two articles, and we vote one down, say, if the voters vote this large item down, or we zero it out today, we're basically tying the hands of the district, and where they've got to find some contractor that agrees to a maximum price, and from my experience in the construction world, anybody who, the people who make a living off of, agrees to maximum price contractors, you don't exactly get your best pickable there with that, so.
So, yes, this gentleman right here, and then I recognize Mr. Baker, if you'd like to speak again. Go ahead, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, but if my memory recalls, the beginning of this year, the school board voted to return a pretty substantial amount of money back to the taxpayers, and many members of the community had, of course, there supported this, obviously, my women there. I think that we should elect, trust these people that we've elected to return this money back, but at the same time, I've heard a lot tonight that ADA compliance, keeping these buildings open, specifically the gym and the fieldhouse, is really important to the taxpayers of Newington, Kingston, and the voters of Newington, Kingston. I think that limiting the amount of money that we can put into this project, and, and handcuffing the administration and the school board as to what they can do with this building, should more problems arrive, is really problematic, and I think that we should consider that when they ask the votes tonight. Thank you.
Okay, your speaker? Honored gentleman right here.
These are two entirely separate warrant articles. The way, the one on the ADA that's written that says not, funds not to exceed, so there's a connection in that to that extent. But there's also a facilities reserve fund. So if the ADA, for some reason, comes in above what's, what the money they have, they didn't tap into that facilities reserve fund to make up the difference.
Okay, this gentleman right here, go ahead. Hockey guy?
Otherwise, motion on the line. So I just wanted, this article and the other subsequent articles, asking for a significant amount of money from the voters. It, it, to me, I think it was put on with the notion of giving voters a choice. I don't believe having these articles with this amount of money for the same year as we have all these other big issues that are facing our district, gives the voters a choice. It gives them no choice. It gives them the choice to vote no for a whole bunch of things. Putting this down at a dollar gives the school board, which has been operating with the overall budget for the last eight years, and you don't see the buildings crumbling, they've been making incremental capital improvements in the district, keeping things in order, and keeping our buildings, taking care of our, our assets. I don't believe we want to tie their hands, so that they think it makes good sense for the district to invest money in a capital improvement. At the end of the year, if there's money left over, why do we want to try to tie the hands of people that we elect from being able to do that? Putting it at a dollar, I support this amendment, allows them some freedom, if they need to use it, at the end of the year, to use those funds.
Any other question? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, who to quote?
Mr. Dyer, I recognize your question.
Mr. Moderator, this board, these communities have always felt that to zero out a percentage of dollars negates the intent of the petition. I'm not a petitioner. I don't support this. However, I believe that it should go through as was presented. There is a language like the previous one, which I also won't be supported, but this one has no errors in language, and to bring it down to one dollar negates the intent of the petitioners, and I believe that changes the meaning.
Yes, I already said, I recognize the chair, and I don't see if we want to turn off the debate at that point. Go ahead. I'm going to read the last line, "As recommended and adopted by the school board in the two thousand eighteen year five-year capital improvement program, two thousand eighteen, twenty twenty-two," this guy. We've heard this be referenced multiple times this evening. This is a plan. We've heard people come forth and say, "How much money are you planning on spending, and what are you going to spend? What is the plan?" Well, don't you have to go ahead and get a study done in order to understand what you're about to plan for? That's what the school board did. The school board went ahead and asked our, bring forth a comprehensive project plan in the next CIP rendition, because everything keeps getting kicked down the road. The school board bantered and bantered and bantered about this. We went over and over and over again. So as far as the language being technically correct, the school board adopted a plan. We did not adopt or recommend this being done. If so, we would have moved forward with this to be done. So I repeat, "As recommended and adopted by the school board in the two thousand eighteen year five-year capital improvement program." Of course, we adopted a plan to understand what we may need to do for life safety, for future, and understand it, what it's going to take. We did not put this forward, we did not put the next one forward. These were put here in malicious intent.
Go ahead, Kevin. And this, now we're going to, this is not a lock of sentence, but go ahead.
Kevin St. James, Kingston, Seaver County attorney here, I'd like to hear her opinion on if changing to zero or one dollar does change the intent.
I, I recognize, and if you want to, go ahead. Can you get that mic to work? Can you get that mic to work?
You're allowed to change the dollar amount in any article. By statute, you can do that. You're allowed to change the intent of articles where they have wording in it. What you can't do is eliminate the subject matter, so either one would be inappropriate amendment to the article. They do have different legal effects, and it's saying that people have a legal right to.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question to the right. Here, move the question twice, and that's fair. Under second, move the question, okay. If you want to cut off the debate at this time, here's what's going to happen. Right now, a motion to amend the article to one dollar, strike up the number one dollar, and that's what we're going to be voting on, we're voting on by secret ballot, if you want to be able to cut off the debate. All of us is here, we cut off the debate at this time, vote. That's what I'm saying. All of us are going to cut off the debate at this time, and vote on the amendments in question, or say no?
Aye!
Those are both. Okay, the ayes on it, and we're going to cut off the debate at this time, and vote. Now, if you're in favor of amending the, we're going to, and hopefully, it won't be a lot, anybody, anyone who's here, or you L, and if you're in favor of amending it to one dollar, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you will vote no. All of us are in favor of amending it to one dollar, you're going to, yes, on the L ballot, Allison Larry, and if you're opposed, you vote no. Please, please move out of the way as quickly as possible, and we should be able to get this done really quickly. And try not to fold it, unfold it, so it just, put it right into us here, so that nobody can see it, but it just takes longer to unfold it, so. In the interest of time, we'd all like to hold for this specifically, and, right. And please vote, if you're right out of the way, for instance, that'd be great, just come down here, and get right out, just talk, you did it, it was up, from the, out of the And once, twice, we'll get pulled and pulled. Chad, you'll go. Okay, and there's no objection here, but I'd like to, kind of, I'd like to go ahead with the next article, start that, please. We have a secret ballot, or something with it, but. If you come to a water, please. Mr. Dyer, if you want to take a seat, and Mr. Dyer, if you guys make your position out there. Mr. Dyer, Mr. Brady, if you have a, come to a water, please. Okay, we're going to go on with the next article, try to move this thing along here a little bit. Casual improvements on Memorial Bank and Hill School, schools submitted by petition shall separately distribute to raise the whole campus amount of activity, three hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty dollars, under the special warrant of complete capital improvements, that the complete capital improvements at the Memorial Bank and Hill School, the exception of windows and blinds that are contained in the second warrant recommended, documented by the school board in the 2018 year of the five-year capital improvement for the 2018, 2022. Do I have a motion here? Fire, okay, second. Second, Mr. Dyer, discussion. Well, to your.
I would like to, as one of the petitioners on this, and there were thirty-nine, which we're collecting in about an hour's time, I would like to say that this is by no means as was the last, anything with malicious intent, as was referred and stated by the school board chair. This would, these are capital expenses which are coming up for the district, which the voters need to be aware of, and need to know whether, that they need to be funded at some point, and they need to be brought before them. This isn't some secret kind of thing, where you make a plan, and then put it in a drawer, and hide it away, and then maybe, if you have some money left over, you start doing it. What the voters need to be able to do, is to be able to decide whether they want to spend this money, how much they want to spend, and when they want to spend it. Again, as I said earlier, on the windows, we need a plan that has a funding plan along with it, that is responsible, and then deals with some of the very real issues we have in the district. And just hiding it and saying, oh, the voters can't handle it, is not a very respectful way to look at voters, hiding it.
And, yes, Mr. Dyer.
I would like to make a amendment, similar, actually exactly the same.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, I'd like to make a amendment, it's the same amendment as the last one, I'd like to win the dollar round from three hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars to one dollar.
Is there a second?
Yeah, right here.
Okay. You can speak to your motion, if you'd like to.
It is the exact same reason as before. Gives the administration the additional flexibility to, if there is any, to be able to spend it, if they need to.
Okay, before we hit the next, that's what I recognize, the next, the, you have the vote tally in, the yes vote is one twenty-four, the no is forty-six, and that carried the vote to one dollar. Go ahead, Mr. Dyer.
Yeah, I would also like to make a point, the.
Hey, can you speak into the microphone?
Sure. I would also like to make a point, that the intent of myself assigning this was for what I believe to be transparent, if this is what the belief is, and this is what the capital requirements are, it should be considered to move us forward, and then that should be presented to the voters. And for somebody who got up and walked across the stage, talking about community, and culture, and morale, to say that voters who happen to disagree with his position are of malicious intent, I think just demonstrates the dedication to community and culture and morale.
Anything for your on this?
I have.
Okay, we'll get lots of people up here, I say, we can stand up, we're right this one, right here, and then I'll.
All right. For that mic.
Second, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, I'd like to join to the, to the chair, and also.
Wait, move to the, to the floor, and then we'll see if somebody wants to answer it. Make state your question, and we'll make Mr. Moderator.
I'd like to ask, there's a key part of this, and this is not to exceed. In the case that there are larger renovations that need to be made, or as previously mentioned in incidents where there's something opened up, and you say, hey, look, there's something more that needs to be done here, what do we do if the estimated cost of this is not lower than estimated cost, it is a cost that exceeds three hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars? Because I still, that concerns me. So, that's a question I'd like to answer.
Okay. Time now, country hands over here, Bennett, go ahead.
I would just like to point out to everybody in the room, that the hidden capital improvement plan can be found on the website.
Anybody else want to put their official question, or grab this, this particular article, or this, this, that, yes, go ahead, Mr. Dyer.
In regards to intent, as I read this petition article, it's asking the voters to raise and appropriate an amount of money to fund a capital improvement project. However, when the petitioner spoke to intent, she said that she felt that a larger plan ought to be made. It doesn't sound like intent was to, in fact, fund what is stated in here, and in fact, her vote on the budget committee was not to.
Okay, I'm going to question you after, I think, really out of order, you might get even the personal attacks against the board, so if you have a point to make about this amendment, go ahead and make a point about the amendment, but that's all.
Because we're talking about intent, we're talking about changing the amendment, and there's been some discussion about the intent of that amendment.
We're not going to give you whose intent is this, whose intent is that. You've got something to add, go ahead and add.
Well, I think I said.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Dyer?
I would like to make, propose a friendly amendment to the amendment, as the chair will accept.
I, I'm in favor.
What's the amendment? Amendment is to make the language of this article similar, or identical to the language of the prior article, and state, raise and appropriate funds in the amount of one dollar. Well, I took it from meaning, that's what we wanted to know, that the amount of bid. The critical point is to, is to strictly not to exceed, because the not to exceed language remains, then there's no flexibility, the flexibility that the amendment wished is ruled.
Are we thinking of an amendment?
I, I'm in favor.
Now, Mr. Dyer.
We want to take out that language in order to keep the warrant of being restricted, and then we reduce the amount to one dollar. Oxy莫onic is the word that comes from, I think, the phrase of the time, but you just, I mean, you reduce it to, people want to reduce it to a dollar, and then they don't want it to be restricted. That's just, I mean, that is the most bizarre moment I've heard.
Anybody else make an, this, yes, go ahead.
When we were first presented with the CIP plan, it was much debate surrounding the funding, each and every mind in that CIP. You can watch tapes and see how we festered over, what do we think the people can afford, and what do we think the people can support. It was determined by the school board and me, that we were going to present to the voters with two warrantables, one for the ADA, the Chase, and the Swayage Gym, and the other for the windows, for the Memorial. Then, we're supposed to, then, lo and behold, there were two new warrants, identical in verbiage, presented at the public hearing, because there was an assumption made, that the board was going to retract their warrantables. Don't know why that assumption was made, so now we have identical warrantables, in addition to these new warrantables, that the board didn't discuss and determine, were not going to be put there, because they didn't want to burden the taxpayers. To me, it is extremely confusing to the voters, as to why this would be put on them on the board, nor the budget committee supports them, nor do the lawyers of the petition.
Anything further on this motion? Yes, go ahead, please.
My name is Kim Detor, and I didn't think that I was going to speak.
You said your name.
Kim Detor. Is that okay? Kim.
Got it, go ahead, stick right in the mic.
I didn't know, I didn't think I was going to speak tonight, but all I want to say is, I feel very discouraged with the last thing that we did, which was kind of to take that, and say it's down to a dollar, and the school board can maybe go and do something with that. And now, we're down to the last article, I think that I have any control, or as a taxpayer, before I start saying, gee, we should rule the teachers' contract, I do not want to do, or get rid of the taking care of the ADA, I hope I'm saying this right, the really, these really important things that need to be done, I feel like my hands are getting tied tighter and tighter, and so I just would like to say that I really object to reducing this to a dollar, I think it should stay with the intent, and, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but.
Thank you. What's the mission?
No means no, ma'am. The intent of this warrant article, and the prior one, is clearly stated, as Mr. Dyer stated, negated party. In the event that, at the end of this year, or in the event that there's a grant funded, in the event that anything happened, and we want to go ahead and say, you know what, we don't want to additional tax burden on, and what have you, if this is voted down, no means no, which that means is, we can't fix the problem, we can't address the problem, we can't work on the problem. So the point being is, the school board chose consciously not to go ahead and put something on the docket for us, if we can, you know, voting against. I want the fire, I want the fire station, I do, but the point being here is, there are things here that ultimately would impede other votes as well, so we chose not to, strictly because in the event that, at some point, there might be available ones, if this is voted down, no means no. We can't work on something that is, that we do know isn't the school working down the road. Why don't we get a grant? We can't work on it, no means no.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, I don't, I'm going to assume that you're ready for the vote. Do you have something else, one of that, one more thing, and, all right, if there's no objection, I recognize, I won't attempt to clarify something, or raise a question, or get a vote.
I guess I'm saying, I, I like it as it's written, like if you're going to say, we'll use this money for this, and you get to vote yes or no, that's fine, when it goes to a dollar, that's what I'm objecting to, and that's all I have to say.
Now, what we're going to do here, your, the motion that made to the board to a dollar, and the amount there of money to be raised, and we're going to use the M ballot as a merit, M as a. M as a Mary, if you're in favor of the board to the dollar, you will vote yes. If you're opposed, you will vote no. If you're in favor, you will vote yes. If you're opposed, you will vote no. Quick, over there. I can't hear you. Yes, if you didn't, if you didn't, just take that out of the spot. If you're in favor of it, you go yes. If you're opposed, you go no. Okay, if you don't, move right along, get a motion over here, we have more items to deal with.
Hi, Duggie. How are you?
Good, how are you?
You're not sleeping yet?
Fun?
I said that you're running to the home.
Yep.
At least you don't have school tomorrow.
I'm sleeping as much as I want.
Yeah. Did Connor pick up college yet?
Uh, he's going to community, um, college.
We saw him, he was doing tour right in front of, like, we would see him as Jake was doing tours. He was like in front of us, so I knew he was going to do it. He toured all the same people as Jake. He was like, did he pay?
I don't fully know yet. He's still, he's still waiting. He was thinking of Great Bay.
Yeah.
And also, um, just, I don't know what he does. He's bouncing out to see what for his final, my team.
Jake just started the second semester at, um, capital.
Good.
He likes that one. We were not prepared that, we didn't even think it for the entire tour. He was like, no. Oh, that's the worst door act ever. Girls are dying, and he died, and he just said, like, um, like, um, um. Jake was like, I don't want to go here. He turned around to the left, and it hit the middle of her upstairs, and he's like, ah.
Okay, anybody else voted the low? Any kind of voters, like, once? Okay, let's go. Like, once, twice, both or both? All right, we're ready to start with the, uh, let's go on to the next ballot of the next, next article, the default budget. All right, we had the last one here, default budget submitted by petition showing an R S A forty, colon, fourteen, small b, to delegate the determination to default budget to San Antonio School District Budget Committee, which has been adopted at an R S A thirty-two, colon, fourteen, three fiscal majority vote required. I'm told by, uh, school council that this cannot be amended, uh, but we have a motion here. If you're second. Second. Uh, discussion. No, no, maybe we'll speak to people later.
I think this is something that can, that can confuse people. So, you know, as a member of the budget committee, but more importantly, as a, um, member of the community, I do not support this. And the reason for that is because I believe that the check and balance system of having the budget in the hands of more than one committee is the appropriate way to do things the way that things are done now. And that's.
Okay, Mr. Dugg.
I do not, this is on my petition, however, I did a couple of years ago before with the exact same petition. And the criteria, the options, and the problems still exist. The budget, the committee is given very little information on the default budget. It is part of our formal budget. And I believe that the budget committee, who actually has the wherewithal and the knowledge and the desire to look into the numbers for the district, should look into all of them. As far as check and balances, we saw tonight that we had two dark show on the budget committee. There are no check and balances in the script. The check and balances, what is proposed, and what the people vote for. There is no alternate. So I would actually support this.
Okay. Is there any other comment to debate on? Yes, sir, on article fourteen.
So just, I guess, a question, comment, if the budget committee ends up controlling both ends of the budget spectrum. What, does the budget committee have any legal representation, legal budget? Because if the default is set by the budget committee, and it's set at such value that it's lower than what the school board administration feel is legal, I could see a future here in some of the issues for two or two boards right now, that they could have one board suing the other to amend that value with the default budget because of the way it was construed. So I know this is an example, I have an example, exact example, but just something to be thinking about. I don't think the budget committee has a blind eye to, for the council.
Okay, while I have it, the announcement on the last ballot question on article fourteen, the yes vote is one hundred and fifteen, the no is thirty-seven, and I, in one blank, I declare. Any other further discussion on article fourteen? Yes.
After having served on the budget committee for nine years, so really what yours is, chair of the budget committee, it is my experience that the budget committee does not have the expertise to establish the default budget. The default budget is a very complex formula. And we have had for several years now the privilege of having a very, very, very competent business administrator to, to.